Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and Council work session this May 31st, 2018. I will call the work session order at 3:00 PM. The first item of business, Tab A, is approval of minutes. So I would just ask that council members read those minutes. And that's for the May 1st meeting, and we will vote on those on Tuesday night. Tab B, Ms. Rooks, Human Resources?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Last month, we decided to...I presented the handbook to you for comments for this last month. So this month, we are going to discuss it and vote on it, hopefully. So do you have any questions, those of you who've had a chance to read it, skim through Any feedback on it?
I will say that I read completely through it this time, and I thought it was very well-written, and I didn't see any legal problems with it at all.
There are several things that I think I need to bring to your attention. One of them is the leave accrual policy, changing the amount and the eligibility rules. We're looking at changing the eligibility rules so where a new employee is in their six-month probation, they don't earn any leave until the end of that six-month provision...provisional period. They will earn five days at the successful completion of their probationary period, and then begin accruing to give them 10 days for that first year. We would change everybody that is from one to three years of employment to 10 hours accrual per year. Right now, it is at six. So that is...and in these meetings this afternoon with the consultant, leave accruals is one big thing that people want to see changed. So like I said, it will go...it'll increase to 10 days per year for the first three years, and then go to 12, 12 days per year, and then to 15 in five-year increments.
Okay, let me ask an obvious question then. So what you're saying is that once an employee has been here six months, they will have...if they get a successful evaluation, they will begin to accrue and will have five days, basically, at that point. We're talking about vacation days.
We will give them a lump sum five days, which is what they would have earned during their probationary period, okay? And then they will begin to accrue for the rest of the six months to get them to 10 days per year.
But they would be eligible to take that?
After their six-month probationary period.
Okay. What would happen if they didn't get the evaluation after six months?
At that point, you don't need to...you can either extend the leave, or you can separate employment from that person. And if you...right now, we have to pay them for any accrued leave that they have when they leave. So in this scenario, you wouldn't have...it wouldn't be a liability to the institute...to the organization until they reach their successful six-month completion.
So is the trigger the six months or the completion of probation?
That's my...
Completion of probation.
So if probation gets extended, then this gets extended?
Correct.
So then that would tie to the evaluation, obviously, which is my question?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Comments?
Also, another eligibility change that we're proposing is to change the match to the 457. Currently, as soon as your benefits eligible, you can sign up for the 457 and have the 3% match or the 50% match. We're proposing that you wait until after their probationary period again to match anything Also, we're looking at bereavement leave. If people are required to travel over 200 miles from their domicile to the funeral, we're proposing that they be...they request two additional days of leave. Right now, you have three days per year of bereavement. This would give somebody who had to travel a long distance additional time to spend with their family.
Comments?
Another change is having our employees be required to report any arrests or charges being brought against them. And once the charges have been adjudicated, they must tell us what the outcome is, just so we are aware.
What if they don't report it?
It's a terminable offense.
Okay, you just tripped a question for me now. I know we used to do background checks on employees once a year, and we also did driver's license checks on them. Do we do that now?
I just completed the driver's license checks about two months ago. We have not done criminal background checks on our current employees, other than our new one...new employees.
Is that something that's in the personnel handbook?
No.
I know that we did it up until 2014.
Who made the decision to quit?
It was never reported to me that we had to do them. I came in September of 2014, just before Jeff left. I never was told that we had to do criminal background checks on current employees every year. So that's...that's when it changed.
I don't remember them ever being changed...I don't remember it ever being done, either.
They were.
And it just never communicated to me, but I never, ever heard.
So I guess my question is, was there ever a policy for that?
No.
Well, they were done, and I'll tell you, the reason I know they were done is because we background...I'm assuming we still background check our volunteer coaches every year. And there was a situation where we had a coach that was also a city employee, and he slipped through the cracks and was coaching. And because we didn't do background checks every year, there was no requirement. So at that point, the decision was made to background check. Of course, I think even when you were here, we did background checks on every...every employee. So, you know, that's just something I would throw out there. To me, if we require our volunteers to be background checked every year, then I'm not sure why we shouldn't require our employees.
We'll work with David on that. I don't know anything about the legalities of that, if there's a restriction or limitation. So we'll look into it.
Is his mic on? Is your mic on?
No, it is now.
Any other questions?
Okay, another issue is jewelry piercing and tattoos. You might want to take a look at that. That is brand-new, okay? It limits the number of piercings, where the piercings can be, and tattoos, and stating that they need to be covered at all times. Whether it's long sleeves, short sleeves, they need to be able to be covered. We do have some employees in Public Works that have sleeve tattoos. I don't know how we would address that, whether we'd grandfather them or not, so...
We'd probably need to decide that pretty soon, if it's going to conflict with the handbook.
They were hired under another handbook that did not have any restrictions.
It says they acquire...they can acquire an exemption from you. Is that the case?
Pardon?
I'm reading here, Human Resources would be able...might make them eligible for an exemption. Is that the case?
Something about eligible for an exemption. You have to speak up a little bit, Danny.
Well, what it says is that if the employee contends that it interferes with their religious rights, then they would be able to get an exemption for it.
Right.
And that would be...that would be a separate issue.
Right, it's just for the religious beliefs, not for, you know...
Preferences.
Right.
Personal preferences.
And then the...also, the paragraph beneath that is brand-new. It's about personal grooming, okay? It talks about personal hygiene, good grooming, and no staff member shall have an odor generally offensive to others who are recording to work, including perfume, because some people are allergic to perfumes. And that, again, is brand-new being added. Nursing mothers is new.
Hang on before you get past that one.
Okay.
David, do you want to weigh in on the whole tattoo issue here?
I'm not aware that there's been any litigation about it. It's probably a controversial issue. I think it's come up before in the police department. That is a routine question about...under a lot of police department SOPs, there's a requirement that you not have any visible tattoos. I don't think it's illegal to prohibit them, but you're cutting out a lot of people out of the possibility of working for you if you're starting to make rules like that. So I would say you need to question the wisdom of it and make that decision as to whether it's a good rule or not. But I don't know that it's an illegal rule to restrict it.
Chief?
Stephanie and I discussed this. We have a policy, you cannot have any visible tattoos, and you can't cover them. It's just if they are not covered by the regular uniform, then you can't have them. And we've turned down some good...probably good applicants because of that. But we believe in the uniformity, and the uniformity is everybody wears the same uniform. If I have to let you wear something separate because you've got that tattoo, then I'm getting away from that. I don't believe in doing that. I think we stay uniform. It's the same with the piercings and all that kind of stuff, too. We look professional, want to maintain that, and that's why we do it. Stephanie asked me about it. I explained why we do what we do. You know, obviously, you've got a lot of folks that already have them. But there's nothing like, David said, there's...I mean, we've looked into this before. People have threatened to sue and all. There's nothing out there as far as...it's not a legal right that you can have a tattoo and all that. It's not freedom of expression or whatever. None of that does apply to anything like that. So, you know, we're in within our...we're within our legal rights to not allow that.
Thank you, sir.
Listen, I just want to apologize for not being prepared with questions and concerns on this. This is what happened. I started working on this handbook last weekend, so I'd get it all done, right? It's 198 pages. I was trying to get the changes, and we couldn't seem to get the version to me that I could see online while I was at a state that showed any of the highlights. You know what I'm saying? So you don't read 200 pages again? You just need to see what's changed, because I've already read the handbook several times. And it didn't get to me, I don't know, till last night, because I've been on the road for two days. So I just want to say, that's why I'm not equipped with my questions today. So I might have a few on Tuesday. Or I'll just call...or I'll just call you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Also, back to leave accruals, we also want to remove the limit on the sick leave.
We haven't got past tattoos first.
Oh.
I was just moving on.
What happens to employees that already have tattoos?
I think we need to just grandfather them in, because they were hired under a different handbook.
Is that in the handbook?
I did not put anything like that in here.
Should that not be in the handbook?
It would need to be somewhere, in case somebody else is in the position, they know where we stand.
You put it into the resolution itself, adopting it, just saying that anybody that already had a tattoo, the time it was adopted is...
I don't have tattoos, not one. Don't have tattoos, don't like needles, even though I'm diabetic. So therefore, I don't have tattoos. But I would just question the wisdom of making hiring decisions based on whether a person has tattoos. I can understand from a safety standpoint why someone would not have piercings, because that can...that can result in someone getting hurt. But that's just my one person's opinion, so...
I still want to bring it back to the BFOPR, is it a religious exemption? Does that come before us, or you make that decision?
According to the handbook, I would make that decision. I would talk it over with the city manager before I would make a decision like that.
Question to always ask is, have we had a problem with people with tattoos? I mean, is...are we trying to correct something that has not been a problem?
Trying to head it off.
Does the word BFOPR still exist in HR type decisions?
Qualification, yes.
The what?
Thank you. Now?
Well, just for a minute on this tattoo issue, I don't want to be...I don't want to have a hard-line policy around here about these tattoos. The way I understood it is that there were accommodations. You could cover them up, you could do some other things. We're not turning people down like the police department is for having tattoos. In this handbook, generally, I'm separating the police department. Am I correct? I'm really...I don't have any either, and I'm not a big fan. But I just would hate to think that we're turning people away or even discouraging people from applying for a job because they have a tattoo. I want to make sure that we look at that. And maybe you can explain a little better about what you're talking about.
We're looking at being...looking professional. We're looking at the professional aspect, looking professional, being professional to our citizens, and tattoos kind of detract from that. So in my...that's my opinion. They kind of detract from the professional persona that we're trying to portray. Somebody come up...would come up if they came up to my door and had tattoos all down their arms?
I mean, he hit me in the face.
That would be kind of scary. And if...I don't think...if you can cover them up with a short-sleeve shirt, there's no problem. But we're trying to cover them up at all times. And it's been said in the past that, you know, somebody coming up with tattoos on their neck and on their arms and their face, I wouldn't want that person on my doorstep, even if he was wearing a city shirt.
I think even the military has compromised to a degree on this, but I don't...I don't remember what their regulations were. Obviously, they were concerned, too. But they've compromised to a degree when they take them in, at least with the Army. Maybe we can find some sort of balance, because it's true, you don't...right? I mean, it can be pretty freaky. But then there's some stuff that...so I don't...there's some stuff that, you know, somebody has something here, it's not that big a deal. But I know what you're talking about, professionalism. That's why I told my kids, don't do that, because it doesn't matter. If the person sitting on the other side of the desk doesn't like it, that's what matters when you want to get hired.
So is there support for no facial or neck tattoos?
Yes.
Well, I think yes.
I agree.
I mean, I understand what you're saying to...
I think you've got universal support for that specific concept.
And it also depends on the tattoo. I mean, there's some ugly...
There are some.
Some tattoos that you definitely wouldn't want...
You can't...
Yeah, but I think if we start dealing with content, and that's why I'm being very careful about that, but...
We don't want to have to deal with the content.
Certainly, I think face, neck, that kind of thing, I think that's a solid...we're on board. I...I'm not a big fan of the sleeves, but I just have a hard time saying if you have a sleeve...you know, I don't know why people do that.
I don't either, but...
But they do it for their reasons, and I just want to make sure that we're not turning away good people because of our own perceptions of what they've done.
Right.
Sometimes I've seen things on people's arms, and I'll ask, you know, what in the world are you doing with that? And it's some kind of long story about symbolism and, you know, I just...I just hate to think that somebody did it for some reason like that, and then we just...we don't employ them for it.
So we limit it to facial and...
I would be...I'd be a lot happier with that myself.
What else, Stephanie?
We are also proposing to do away with the limit to sick leave, which right now is 504 hours, which is 62 days. That does not even cover the elimination period for long-term disability, which is 90 days. So we're looking at doing away with the limit, because it is not a liability to the institution, because we don't pay anybody out for sick leave.
But don't we hold that position for that period of time?
What do we do if they're gone a long time?
Do we not need to fill it?
If they're gone a long time?
That is a liability.
Yeah. Okay, so we're not paying them, but I'm saying the same thing has. Okay, we're not paying, but if that position is empty, how long do we leave a position empty?
Either until that person comes back, or they've been declared disabled and can't come back to work.
But we can put a temp in it.
Right, we have that situation right now.
We have somebody on...is he on FMLA?
No, he's on workers' comp.
Workers' comp. We have a temp filling in for him.
Okay, because...
Well, I don't think that's what we're...you're talking about sick leave.
Sick leave, yes.
And right now, there's a limit on it. That was imposed when I was here as an employee, and it made sense. Now, I thought it did go up to the short-term disability limit, and I'm okay with that.
Short-term disability is 15 days, okay? Not everybody carries short-term disability. Everybody carries long-term disability, because the city pays for it. That is a 90-day elimination. Right now, the limit on sick leave is 62 days.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is, I understand the 90-day and putting a limit, but I don't know, even as a former employee, I don't know if that's a good idea to, you know, let someone just bill thousands of hours potentially of sick leave. I know there's not a liability when they leave like there is with vacation time, but that's my opinion.
Would you be good with a 90-day limit?
I would.
I would.
What was the problem?
Everybody else, councilman?
Yeah.
90 days?
That sounds reasonable.
Getting out to the disability.
Forever and a day.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think that would be...
I believe so. What was the problem we had to fix last time? We had somebody out on, I think it was disability, and it was a problem. I remember you bringing it up, because it went on and on.
Because he was out for two years.
Well, you just said unlimited, so that could be two years. I'd like it to be 90 days.
This other situation, he was out on workers' comp. He just kept drawing workers' comp, and kept drawing it, and kept drawing it. So what the policy says now is you can have your 12 weeks of FMLA. Then you can request another 12 weeks of medical leave. But beyond that, that's when we separate employment.
Okay, because I knew we had addressed it, okay.
Except in this case with Oglesby, shouldn't have said that name, but with this other employee, he is out. He wasn't eligible for FMLA, and we have...he's not back yet, so...
Okay, I think the council spoke pretty soundly on that, on the 90-day thing, but...
90 days, okay.
Okay, any...what else?
Results for positive...or discipline for positive drug screen results. The first thing we need to do is we need to allow them to go to EAP, which we have an EAP program. On the second time that you test positive for drugs, you're gone. We terminate you at that point. On a random drug screen, and we do those every month.
What do you mean, you do them every month? You do them on every employee every month?
No.
So two people out of 140 employees every month?
Yes.
I'm more inclined to have a zero-tolerance policy than what you're talking about. What are the random chances that we get to that person again? They're pretty high.
Once they test positive, you can actually send them periodically to a drug screen.
Is that the policy?
That is...
Is that what you would do, or what could happen?
Could happen.
We didn't write that in there, though, did we?
We didn't write that in there, though.
Let's talk about that before Tuesday. David, we need to have a powwow about that.
At one time, we had a drugs...drug policy. I don't know. I mean, it's probably been 15 years. I don't know how well it's been implemented.
Well, I can tell you, I was...I was here 14 years, and I was...had to do a drug test one time in 14 years.
Other than employment?
I didn't do one when I was employed. It wasn't required.
We're doing that now.
Absolutely, yes.
So 14 years, one drug test.
I think the policy is, though, that if there is a wreck or some kind of a problem that you're required to go through a drug test?
Yes.
I would think if you have an accident, there would be.
We have a driver involved, we send him or her to be screened.
We're on that committee here, where they're involved in the records.
Do we do that, committee? I don't think we do that anymore, do we?
We do.
Y'all do? The police department does, but that's not done on a citywide basis.
It does.
There's a accident committee that looks at every incident.
There's not an accident committee, but we send everybody for a drug screen.
Now, what we're talking about, what he's talking about, is there was an accident review committee. Every accident that happened in a city vehicle or a piece of equipment was reviewed by a committee that was made up of different departments.
I wasn't aware when I got here that there was one, but we've talked about putting it back into place and talked about who should be on it, because we have had some incidents that I think warranted it.
We have added a line under the break policy that people must leave their workspace to eat lunch, if they're out in the public. If you're sitting out, like in City Hall, if you're sitting out in the lobby, you don't need to eat at your desk. You need to go into the break room to eat, if you're going to eat in the office. But eating at your desk is not acceptable out in the public. Okay.
For all departments?
Mm-hmm.
Well, she's saying if you're out in public.
See, if you're...
If you're in the public.
If you're in the open.
If you have a door, you can close your door. But if you sit out in where the public can walk in and see you...
It doesn't look professional.
It does not look professional when you're...
Yeah, I agree with that, because who wants to stop eating to help the customer so they're more likely to continue eating? What impression does that leave with the customer? I don't see how it's unreasonable to say, take your lunch to the break room, or go out for lunch.
Are all the department heads...have they been told this? And they understand and agree that's a good idea?
I don't think they've agreed to it, but...
I can't imagine that Ms. Coleman would agree to that. Does Ms. Coleman agree with that?
There is a place to go to eat.
Could go to the senior center.
Without the public seeing you.
They got doors.
How does that affect your gym supervisor?
Where do they eat?
In the gym, where they're supervising.
They don't take a lunch break?
Yep, while they're supervising.
Because my understanding is, we have to...we have to allow them a break.
A break from the job.
Not part-time.
We don't have to. The Fair Labor Standards does not require us to give anybody a break.
These are part...right, you're right. But what about part-time employees? Because you didn't...I didn't hear you say...you said all employees.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be part-time and full-time, seasonal?
Yeah, we didn't differentiate.
Yes, you're...
I don't know that part-time employees are...deserve a lunch break.
I mean, grabbing a snack bar or something wouldn't qualify. That's not what I'm calling lunch.
But we said eating.
Yeah, we don't want...I don't want them eating at their desk confronted with the public, period.
Hard to eat a peanut butter sandwich.
Cashiers doing it.
Work on your computer, too.
Well, and I wouldn't mind differentiating between part-time staff and full-time staff, if that's something that you could consider looking at.
David, what are you thinking?
Well, just trying to make that distinction on part-time and full-time. I mean, a part-time person can be somebody who's working three days a week as part-time, but they're there the same hours all day long and be taking the same type of break. So I'm not sure that's the right...I understand what you're trying to address. That person that's there for three hours a day...
Right, or the coach.
Doesn't need a break. But somebody who's working Monday, Wednesday, and Friday still needs a break. There's so many different variables, it's going to be tough to draw up a policy that will be working in every situation. Saying you don't eat at your desk is pretty clear that that would apply whether you're part-time or full-time.
But you can if you're behind doors. They just don't want you eating your lunch, dealing with the public, or out, because it doesn't...
I don't want people to be available to the public and eating at the same time.
You would hope that our staff and our supervisors are going to use some common sense, and will make accommodations so that people can eat their lunch while they're working somehow, in a way that's not offensive to the public.
Common sense and government, the human mind's got to get there.
That's our job.
This gets complicated, doesn't it?
So is it just me, or does it appear to anybody that it's...you know, I don't understand, we don't do background checks on employees, but we all worry about them eating at their desk?
We do do background checks when they're... We do do background checks when they're initially hired. But if you want to institute a policy that says we'll do background checks once a year, we can do that. Just like we do with the drivers.
Yeah, maybe we can hear, is there, is there a downside to doing that? Is it extremely expensive? We certainly oughta, it ought to not go fourteen years without one. You could have somebody with some serious issues, so even if you didn't do it every year, is there something in between? It, is it complicated? Is it extremely time-consuming to do it every year? I need to hear an argument on why we wouldn't, so that we don't end up with extended periods.
I'm sure it is time-consuming for the individual that has to type everything into GCIC, which is somebody in the police department.
So.
We'll, we'll talk about it and staff maybe.
Maybe there's a compromise of every couple of years or something like that, but so that it doesn't end up with fourteen years where there's no check.
You can stagger them, I mean, in groups, I mean.
Something.
But then, then we need to come up with a policy. If somebody does have something within the past year or so, what do we do? You know? If it's a felony, if it's a misdemeanor, what do we do in that?
We make it part of their annual evaluation.
Or do we even keep it?
If that's the way you want to do it.
Based on the criminal charges and the adjudication of the criminal charges.
I mean, we've already, we've already added that they're, they're going to have to tell us if there's an offense.
Right.
Or even an arrest.
Is long, but that assumes that they tell you. They could go years and not tell us, right?
Well, in the past, they could. Now, they can only do that under the risk of being caught and terminated. Not for the offense, but for not telling us. We'll knock that one around Monday morning and see what kind of ideas we have.
Uh, the next one on my list is the discounted participation fees and facility rentals for employees. We're proposing a fifty percent discount on facility rentals and participating in team sports, summer day camp, things of that nature. For city employees.
So for city employees, they'd get a discount on renting any facility that's rentable, uh, a fifty percent. And their children could participate in those other programs at half price.
Yes.
Boy, y'all are hitting all the good ones. So what happens to the contract instructors in the recreation department that get paid on an eighty-twenty basis? We lose money, right? Because that, that half, that fifty percent deduction comes off the part that we pay. So now, instead of getting twenty dollars on a hundred dollars, we're going to get ten dollars on a hundred.
Or none.
Or zero. In my thought, I mean, that's why it's important, I think the thought of the department is, that's just one. Give me about five minutes, I'll probably think of a few more. So they're unlimited, they can get fifty percent deduction.
On anything under the rentals or the sports.
It's not set in stone. That's why we're discussing it, because we may change things.
I, I understand.
I'm just trying to think about what the greater impact of that is. What, what I'm seeing that as is an employee benefit. And I've asked you to look at coming up with a statement for the employees to be able to see what their benefits are, and I, I see that as being one of them. I just don't know what the overall impact would be, and Jeff's talking about something that I'm not familiar with over at the rec department, so I want to make sure that we're looking at those things and, and getting these department heads to weigh in on that. I, in principle, I don't really disagree with it, but I, I need to understand the impact and if it really makes sense for us to get into that.
Okay. Um, the next one is the, the internal appointment and salary adjustment calculation. For somebody who is appointed to an interim position, we will take them to the minimum of the pay grade for the new position or the vacant position. Or if they're already making more than that, we would give them a ten percent temporary salary adjustment.
And it is temporary, and how does it roll back and what is the trigger for that?
Once that position has been filled, that person would roll back into their original position and we would take the pay increase away.
Is this mainly because we had some people who had to assume more responsibility? Okay, this was their position, this person's gone, they got put up here to handle now more, but we weren't necessarily giving them additional money for what they were having to do.
We were giving them additional money, but this clarifies how much.
This makes it a policy, because what we had before was sort of this willy-nilly, we do this, we do that. Most of us didn't even understand what had happened, and in many cases, when, when it was time to roll back, it didn't roll back. I understand you're making this into a policy. That's why I just wanted to understand, is there a trigger that stops it? If a person is not making the minimum for the position that they will be assuming for the interim time, I agree, they should go to that. And I don't know if the ten percent is the right number, but if you feel like it's the right number, it's what we pay you to do.
It's been in past practice that it was a ten percent increase.
Okay, but now we're, we're putting it in writing, we're making it a policy.
Correct.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, next is going to be probably another discussion item, tobacco use. We are outlawing, so to speak, on city property tobacco use, period. That includes vehicles, that includes buildings, that includes outside the buildings. It will give a department head an opportunity to, um, define a smoking area, but that is where the smoking or tobacco use will be limited to. This includes vaping.
It includes what?
Vaping, the ones that are electric and you smoke the vapor instead of the tar.
Okay, so if they're over in the recreation department, Vicki, for instance, could designate an area, so it would still be on property, because you might have to walk a quarter mile to get off property over there. She could designate a place and that's where you go.
That's where you go.
But you said city property, so somebody could be fixing a pipe or digging a ditch and chewing.
Hmm, that's not the intent.
But, but it said, did, did I understand, it said city property and vehicles?
It's on page thirteen.
Because I don't really care what they do when they're, it's different when you're having to talk to the public. If you're going to now talk with the public, you need to not be doing any of those things while you're talking to people. This came up before, didn't it, Ellen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This is, um.
Like that.
With all city-owned buildings, facilities, and vehicles to promote the well-being of city employees. So I, maybe we need to define that and while they're on city time. Because, you know, the minute they get out of the truck, they're going to put a dip in or light up a cigarette.
I'm assuming when you say tobacco, that's chewing tobacco or smoking tobacco.
Any tobacco.
So you're, you're proposing that we reduce city time if they're on the clock, so on-call people?
On-call people, they're at home and they're not really on the clock until they get called in.
So we don't pay people on-call?
We pay them a stipend for holding the phone for a week.
Say it again.
It's not really a clock issue, it's more of a flat amount for holding the phone. So they are paid the stipend whether they are called out or not. There is, we did add a policy, well, a sentence to the on-call policy where they cannot partake of any alcohol. They must be clean and sober to come in and fix the leaks and whatever it may be.
So we already restrict some behavior for that particular position?
We're adding that.
We're adding that.
Oh, we're adding that as part of this?
Mm-hmm.
It seemed like that would have been part of it all along.
You would think so.
But.
One other thing that we are changing, proposing a change to is when we re-employ somebody. It used to be if they were gone less than a year, we would re-employ them like they had always been employed. I am wanting to limit that to thirty days, because everywhere else I've ever been, a significant break in service is thirty days. So they would go, if they were gone longer than thirty days, we'd treat them as a new employee, which is, which is something I have done in the last two instances.
As far as?
Leave accruals, probationary periods, things of that nature.
Okay, that, that needs to be specified, though, because I don't think that's the way our retirement works.
It is, actually.
So with GMA, if you're gone seven years, if you work here seven years, which means you're vested, and you leave and you stay gone for a night, for a year, and you come back, you start at one?
No, your seven years carries with you, but not the eighth, the year that you're gone. You don't get credit for that.
So you don't start back at one?
You could go back, you could go from Bremen to here and keep your time.
Right, but. The city's portion, we wouldn't pay the city's portion, though. We would pay, I mean, we wouldn't pay Bremen's portion, just Villarica's, yeah.
Right. So when you get ready to retire, what you have to do is actually retire from each place that you've worked. But I think thirty days is reasonable, so.
Do we have a lot of that happen?
We, not a lot, but it does happen occasionally.
I, I think a year sounds like a lot. I think thirty days sounds like not enough.
I know that we've had one come back in police since I've been here. But my, my personal philosophy is, is if you leave, you're gone.
I don't disagree with that.
I'm not, I'm not a fan of rehiring.
If you leave.
We don't want to be in, I'm not with you, why are you going?
Yep. It just says something to somebody leaves about their judgment if they just immediately turn around and want to come back.
I guess I was considering more, uh, we, we have a plan, we, we might relocate, we're headed to, to Virginia. Oops, those plans changed, or that didn't work out, you know, or something, you know, something a little more innocent than, uh.
Just quit.
I'm out. You know?
If they just out, be out, but like you said.
And, and sometimes that does happen. We had.
Wouldn't ninety days be too much for you?
I'm, I'll do whatever I'm, what the council.
Actually, it would depend on the circumstances, like you say.
Would, would we be able to allow you some, sorry, some discretion up to ninety days within the policy?
It needs to be consistent, whatever we do.
Okay.
So it doesn't show favoritism. Tom, um, I'm assuming, you're familiar with all these changes, correct? Did y'all?
This is primarily me, Sarah, and Stephanie's.
Okay, so y'all networked all together to work on this?
We've talked about it a lot.
Well, and, and only because in, there's a number of instances, this is not my expertise, and I would be more inclined to defer to you all, but I kind of like to know that there was some sort of collabor, collaborative, collaborative. There you go. Effort, you know, and input, whether it's department heads or you or whatever. Just because sometimes you come up with a more balanced idea that way.
Question, um, the council is not affected by what you're going through now, is that correct?
Correct.
Different set of rules.
Pardon?
Different set of rules for the council.
Do you have any rules, other than Robert's rules?
Are, are you like quitting your job or something? You want to come back?
No, no, I was gone for ten, I was gone for ten years before I came back.
The council's rules are in the charter.
Yeah, you're elected, a little different.
I just want to make sure I bruise me ten years.
So I will defer to the council to define the number of days or months that.
I would rather it be ninety. I'm not going to argue if it's thirty, if, if anybody wants to weigh in.
I like ninety.
Everybody else like ninety?
I buy ninety.
Yeah, I'm not a hard-line one where the other, I really would defer more to professional staff with some input.
Okay, tuition reimbursement, this is new also. Yes, we had, we had educational assistance policy and we still have that. We saw that more as pertaining to training, so people can get their licenses. Um, we add, this is actually for college tuition reimbursement after you receive your final grades. If you receive an A in the course, it has to be job-related, okay? So somebody in finance could take an accounting class, something like that, okay? I could take another HR class. You get an A, we reimburse a hundred percent of tuition, not fees, but just tuition, okay? If you get a B, we reimburse seventy-five percent, I believe. It's not a hundred, it's less.
Well, would you have to, if that's the case, would you have to, um, be, make sure you work, come back to the city for X amount of years? Or just reimburse somebody for something, just.
Yeah, would you have some?
They get that and then they take off.
Some commitment restraint to it.
They're going to be committed to be, to work here for so many years, whatever, before they.
We've tossed that around a little bit, um, both for your training, getting licenses and things, and the tuition. I don't think we've come to a.
We didn't recommend one in here, did we?
No.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you, it sounds like you're going to say something like a hundred is an A, seventy-five is a B.
Seventy-five is a B.
C is fifty.
Anything below is nothing.
Anything below, I would assume to be nothing. Uh, but I would like you to look at some kind of commitment. I, I don't know that you go take one class, we reimburse, reimburse you ninety bucks and now you're committed to us for two years. But you, I think you need to look at that whole piece and, and come up with a plan if that is something you all can do. There needs to be some commitment, but I don't, I think there, you know, obviously what we put into it matters, too.
When chief sends somebody to the academy, he requires them to stay two years.
Yeah, there's something like that, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Get their training.
My gut response, my gut response is I'm not paying tuition for anybody. And part of the reason is, it also depends on when you have a sorry teacher and a good teacher, because I've seen it, especially recently, in certain courses. I do like the fact of when we send people to training, but I think we need to watch what we do. I don't think we need to necessarily be sending people to California or way off for thousands of dollars and things that maybe could be done closer statewide, within the state. I want us to watch how we spend on that, and I think there should be something attached to it, like the chief does, where, because training costs money.
I don't think we're talking about training, we're talking about college.
I'm differentiating between, I think that's good and fine, and it should be tied to you have an investment to stay if we're going to spend that.
I understand.
I don't see, I don't see this.
We're talking, I understand what you're saying, but you're talking about two different things. One is a, a training thing, and I think that's a fair discussion, but one is, is this tuition reimbursement. I don't have any problem with, with the idea or the concept of that. In fact, um, I think it's a good idea when we talk about those benefits. But, um, what he, what, what the chief does is, is different, too. He gives them their entire education for being post-certified, right? And that, that, they graduate from the academy, that's where that commitment comes from, and we pay for the whole thing. We're talking about maybe some classes here and there to improve what your degree is or to move toward a degree.
Right.
So I think that if you could look at the overall picture of what we're putting into it versus what commitment they need to make, I think there needs to be a commitment like Ms. Markman says.
But there is a difference in what the chief does with officers and what I hear being proposed, because his officers have to be post-certified to be a police officer, correct?
Correct.
We have hired an employee and that employee now decides that they want to go to Georgia Southern to get a recreation degree. So we're going to, the taxpayers are going to pay for their education to get a degree in recreation, because it is job-related.
It is.
Now, who, who prompts that? Does the employee decide that they're going to go to, to college to get their?
The employee would have to get a leave of absence to go take those courses unless they're online.
But I, but is it, but is it requested by the city manager and the department head, or does the employee do that on their own? Do they just decide they want to get the degree since they're in recreation?
No, any, any training or education has to be approved by the city manager.
Is that written in the?
All training must, it is written that it has to be approved by the city manager.
Even if they do it on the wrong time, after hours, whatever?
That's when they'd have to do it.
If the city pays for it.
But he's saying for the, but for the reimbursement part, yes, he would have to approve it. If they didn't ask for reimbursement, he wouldn't have to approve it. But there, there is a larger picture here. We're receiving the benefit of the training that they're getting in that ongoing process, so. But there, there is a larger picture here. We're receiving the benefit of the training that they're getting in that ongoing process, so...
Maybe, maybe, depending on the quality of the coursework. Half the reason tuition is so high is because when other people are paying for it, it doesn't have to be market-based, and tuition keeps going higher and higher and higher, because other people are paying for it or there's easy college loans. I just hate to see us getting in the business of paying for tuition. Training, certification, things like that, I feel differently about.
Like, if I have an opportunity for an officer to go get a degree in criminal justice, I want him to do it.
But you made that decision, not the employee.
Well, I mean, it would be their initiative.
No, but if, if the chief, what I'm saying is, if the chief said, look, we need a, one of our officers needs to have a degree in criminal justice, then...
I'd, I'd, if all of them want to go, it'd be good for me.
How do you budget for that?
At the same time.
Well, we wouldn't approve it all.
Yeah, but see, if you have to throw the chief out, that's, that's a total island, way over yonder. We're talking about people... Yeah, we're throwing you out right now, that, we're, we're talking about...
He's, the main beneficiary of this would be to get people to go get criminal justice degrees, or even master's degrees for the guys that are, or the men and women that are trying to reach lieutenant and captain and future chief's roles.
And that's the, that's the, that's the most important part to me, is not just helps them with their job, but you're helping them go up the ladder one day, and you hope that you're doing it to where they want to stay here. And I agree, if there's a way that we can keep them here by doing that, that's good, I think, by showing that initiative and, and letting them go. Now, I don't agree with sending them to three or four classes a semester or so. I say, we pay for one class a semester, and that, the, the rest of it, they can pay for themselves. I mean, that shows that they have to put out, and, and we're helping them. And, and that's the way it was done when, when I was helped to go to school, because when I, at a former employer, I'm not going to name it, but, uh, they helped pay for, uh, my college, and I appreciate that, and I was loyal to that department, because they did that. And they, so I think it's part of the progression of, of employees to move up into their jobs and get better, you know, and things. I think it's important that you do that. So I, I definitely think it's a positive. It's, it's not cheap, but you're not going to have seventy-five people lining up to do this tomorrow. I mean, you, you, you're going to have very few at first that, that do this, and, and at all, probably.
As the economy gets better, we're going to have a harder and harder time hiring and keeping people.
Well-trained people.
What if you have an employee that, that, that goes, the city pays for it, reimburses, but they fail?
They get zero.
They don't get reimbursed. We, we pay it after the grade. They have to bring the grade.
They have to make two-year...
They bring the grade and show the grade, and that's when they get reimbursed.
At the end of, if it's a two-year degree?
At the end of semester. No, each semester, you do each semester, and when they make an A, you reimburse a hundred percent, a B, seventy-five. It's up to y'all from there. If you want to give them fifty for a C, that's fine, but to me, anything below a C, they don't get anything.
So if you take, if that person takes one year of a two-year class, if you take six semesters of the twelve, then what happens? We've paid for six semesters, and then they flunk out. What happens?
You've already reimbursed according to the other grade, so, I mean, I don't, I don't, I think you're wanting an answer for every situation. I don't think that's fair.
No, we, we dismissed an employee here because they didn't get a degree.
That, that's been a long time ago.
But it happened.
I, I'm not saying it didn't.
So I'm, I'm just saying.
But the thing is, that was supposedly part of his hiring, was that they, he would get his degree. We don't do that. We don't require anybody to get a degree after we hire them. We, if they, the job that requires a degree, they have to have it when they get here. That's the way we've done it. But this is to help them go up the step, you know, go the progression.
Okay, so there's private sector businesses that will do that. In fact, if you'll commit to them for three years, they may pay all your nursing fees. Those are private sector. In, in public, in an institution, another government institution like education, you might get paid more for certain degrees. Um, you also would have a better chance of moving up if you have an administrative degree and be the AP assistant principal, but they do not pay for your schooling. I just, I think this is, we're not paying for it. The taxpayers are paying for it. I don't see it, but that's, that's only my opinion.
It's hard to see how you go wrong.
In education, there's some places, I know that if you work there for so many years, they pay for your student loans. So there, it is in education, too, where they do that, because I, if you work for them so long, they will pay for your student loans.
Those teachers would get loan forgiveness from the state, there's a lot of programs.
Also, in higher education, which is a state agency, um, you work after your six-month probationary period, they'll pay for your degrees.
I bet they will in higher education in Georgia. That's one of their problems.
So the long, the long-term issue that we're going to have in trying to do retention that runs counter to my philosophy is I don't like hiring in police the upper echelon positions from outside. And if we don't grow those people, that's what you get forced into, and what you wind up doing is hiring somebody else's problem. Because if they were really good employees and really happy, they're not leaving. So the only people that you're going to get to leave is somebody that you overpay for a problem. And so if we don't grow them, and this is one of the best ways to grow them, that's where we're headed. And that's, that's not the kind of department that I want to have. Having somebody like Shadetson Parker is a thousand times better than going and hiring somebody from one of the counties or someplace else that's been somewhere for, what, twenty-five years, and bringing them in and trying to get them in our culture. It just isn't as effective.
What else?
Next? Okay. Uh, personal leave. I believe this is the last one on my list. What we're proposing is that, uh, employees at the end of the year are eligible to trade twenty-four hours of sick leave and turn it into personal leave to be used on the next calendar year. If that twenty-four hours is not used during the calendar year, it is forfeited at the end of the next year, okay? So if I change twenty-five, twenty-four hours of my sick leave to personal leave in December, by the next December, I have to use it or it forfeits it. Personal leave allows the people to use what they couldn't use sick leave for, like to go run errands or take care of some business, and use purse, personal days instead of vacation.
How do we know when they're taking, how do we know if somebody's taking sick leave to run errands or they're sick?
They better not be.
Don't have some benefits.
So that, that's what we're proposing. I think the employees would...
Again, we're looking ahead at the retention issue.
And it's not really changing anything, it's just moving twenty-four hours of sick leave, which they might not ever use, to personal leave where they can use it for personal business. And it will not be paid out if they are leaving, because it is considered part of sick leave. Or it was at one point, now it's personal leave, but it will not be paid out. So it doesn't add a liability to the, to the organization.
Next.
So, hold on a second. So what we're saying as a city, if you've got leave, take it. It really don't matter that we've got a million-dollar project that you're in charge of, but you need to take that leave, or you're going to lose it.
No, it's up to their...
No, I'm, I'm saying, go ahead.
They can transfer, they can change up to twenty-four hours, or they can do none. They don't have to. It's on a person-to-person basis.
But they'd lose it?
No, because it would be sick leave. If they don't transfer it to personal leave, it is sick leave, and there is no...
No limit on sick leave?
Well, there is, I think we decided on the ninety-day limit.
So if you don't, don't use your sick leave and don't transfer it, you just lost it.
Mm-hmm. When you leave, yes.
Yeah, right now, the problem that I have is making sure all the department heads are taking their vacation. So the problem isn't, the, the department heads are not around to do their job. The problem is, is that we got a bunch of conscientious people who are working on their projects and making sure that they get out of here sometime. So going to class and going on vacation, I think it's healthy. In the long run, it may be inconvenient, you know, when they miss a, a day or a week, but I think when you look at the attendance of the department heads, it's very positive.
Next.
Okay, loss and damage to city equipment. We're proposing that the first time, the first instance, the, the city will pay to replace it. The second instance, it is the, fifty percent of it is the employee's responsibility if it's, you know, willful damage or they lose it.
Well, hold on, if it's willful damage, I think the first time they're going to pay for it. But if it's neglect, then, you know, or just a, you know, a...
Or accident.
Well, I think an accident, a true accident is one thing, but somewhere you just made a stupid error, but not willful. That's something entirely different, and maybe I could go along with that, that policy. Say that again. If it's willful damage, you want to give them one chance where we just pick up the tab.
Am I the only one that didn't have a redline version of this? Because I could not get my hands on a redline version until it showed up.
It's not redlined, it's yellow.
Oh, okay, yellow highlight. I'm sorry, by the time you got that to me, I was on the road, so I couldn't read it. I had to get it two days in, at least two days in advance.
This is the one that I attached to, um, the, the program that Lisa has for, uh, items, so...
We're going to write that out in the policy manual anyway.
This one's fine.
Sorry, I'm looking for that.
Describe willful damage. Define willful damage.
You get mad and you throw it down on the road and it breaks.
Ma'am?
Oh, that ought to be the first time.
She said you get mad and you throw it down on the street, you just...
Okay, so you lose your, you lose your work cellphone. The first time, you don't, you don't pay for it. The second time, you'd pay fifty percent. You're talking about something like that. Did anybody lose anything that's super expensive, a tractor? We don't lose those, right? I'm just trying to think of some examples of how this...
I, I lost a tractor in my last job.
Of how this play, you may have, right?
We did. We, we were cutting right away, we loaded it on a trailer, somebody stole it off the trailer while we were...
Okay, so there's an instance, if you were in charge of that, would he pay fifty percent for that? I'm just trying to see how this plays out.
But he didn't willfully do it. He did put it up there and somebody got it, so that wasn't his fault, really, unless he should have had it nailed down.
Yeah, if it should have been locked up or something.
They stole it off the trailer or just took the trailer and everything?
Oh, well, off the trailer.
Hey, if you drive a truck into five-foot water, is that willful or not?
Well, you don't know it's five-foot water until you get there.
Yeah, you do, too.
This next one, at least.
That makes good sense.
They can take their cellphone and throw it against the wall.
Right, if you just get mad and throw your cellphone against the wall, not paying for that.
Maybe the next job you have, you'd pay for it.
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me.
So you like this one, Tom? Does it, will this work out in the scenarios that you can visualize?
I don't, I don't like the, the open-ended situation that the chief is discussing, where an employee could just tear up something and tear up something and lose something and tear, that just, that didn't work for me. But I, I'm not probably in the zero tolerance either, except for willful. I could, I could add that.
This is on page twenty-five of the handbook. It says, "An employee who deliberately loses his or her required uniform or loses or breaks his or her city-issued computer or mobile device will be required to replace them at their own expense. For the first incident, the employee will be responsible for fifty percent of the replacement cost, and documentation will be kept in their personnel file. If there are subsequent incidences, the employee will be responsible for the entire replacement cost."
As he is removed from the premises.
I mean, I can...
Three strikes, you're out.
I can see some of this. When you lose something that belongs to someone else, there's a consequence. Figure out the details.
So, that's it.
Let me just ask, without everybody trying to grab me, would, is anybody comfortable with maybe moving this out another month?
I'm thinking we may have to, based on what I'm hearing.
Well, everybody knows I'm not going to be here Tuesday, um, and I don't really have huge issues, but I think we might want to clarify some of this stuff, and I wouldn't personally mind if you all would go along with just moving this to July.
I've got no problem with that.
I was, I was going to mention that, that I, I don't, I don't know this, and I'm not going to look up, so that nobody accuses me of looking at a department head, but I would like to make sure that our apartment heads have a chance to weigh in on this and, you know, think about all their scenarios. I'm familiar with the ones in the Recreation Department, because I worked there fourteen years, but no doubt there are other department heads that may want to weigh in if they haven't had that opportunity.
So moving it out a month to give them a chance to weigh in.
We, we, we did distribute it one time at the staff meeting.
We've lived a long time without this, so we can afford another month.
They still don't have their hands on it.
Pardon?
We've lived a long time without this, so we can afford to wait one month.
Well, it's, you know, we have the two thousand sixteen handbook that's still in force, so we'll just go along with that.
By and large, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it. I'd just like to clarify some of this and close some of the open-endedness pieces of it. And, and like the mayor says, I, I don't know that you didn't, but I'd like to know that, that department heads weighed in on it. And even if you didn't end up adopting what they said, at least we knew that they, they had a chance to be involved in it, and you considered that along with the city manager and Sarah. It sounds like all of y'all worked on this, so... And I know it's been a lot of work, um, and I don't mean to delay it unnecessarily, but I do think some of this stuff needs to be looked at.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
My, my final comment, one more comment, Stephanie. I had asked, um, that we put something in here about an exit interview, and I've looked through it, I don't see that.
You do not? Is it something that I am doing though?
Hang on, could you hang on just a second? I love trains. If I told you all that later, love trains.
But she already talks really soft.
For a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, it'd be quite.
He said that before, too.
I've got ten dollars.
Each crossing.
Ten dollars a crossing?
Hundred and ninety.
No.
It is not written, the exit interview piece, but I am doing exit interviews with everybody who leaves. I know why they're leaving. I may not know where they're going, but, um...
We can put it in there, though.
I, I would like to see that in, in a...
That's not in here, though.
That's in the procedures manual.
So what we did was, we took out everything that we considered a procedure for a proceed, an employee procedure man, manual on the civilian side, just like the chief has an SOP on the police side. So we're trying to differentiate between policies and just the, how do we do stuff? And it would be in there.
I agree with that, but as long as it's done, you know, once again, I would like to make that, you know, I think it's very important that we do exit interviews on every employee that leaves here.
And that it's written somewhere, in case somebody new came in, they would know that they're supposed to be doing that.
In that same vein, I, I one hundred percent agree with that, and we've talked about that before. The other piece, though, I talked about several months ago, not long after Tom came, was the Human Resources coming up with some type of a, a survey that all employees would be able to do, that would be reflective of, of their department and their department head and that kind of thing. And I don't know exactly how you would get around to that, but we've talked about it, and it may be part of a policy as opposed to a handbook, but just, just keep that in mind.
Okay, and like a satisfaction survey?
Something like that, where you know where current employees stand, where, you know, what's going on, before we have to get to the exit interview part. Maybe there are things that could be looked at internally.
Okay. I would just want to let you know that today we are doing focus groups and orientations for the, um, compensation and classification study. Most of the comments from many departments have been all positive about how they work here... here, they, they enjoy coming to work, they love working here, you know, so. That's, I thought that was a good.
I, I think that's good. When will we see some of that?
Um, she is doing those today and tomorrow, okay? And then she will go back and summarize everything and send it to us.
Are we thinking July?
Probably.
When we would have a report for that, that study?
Maybe.
Okay. I'm not trying to hold you to it, I'm just curious.
That's the earliest, but we gotta have it back by the end of having it in the budget. Otherwise, we have to wait a year or do a mid-year implementation, something.
Okay.
So we're gonna try to have it in the budget.
Thank you, Stephanie. Lot, lot of hard work, and we, we appreciate it. Tab C, Community Development.
You don't have an hour.
No?
No.
Good evening, uh, Lenise Lyons, Planning and Zoning Specialist. Um, first one is Final Platte, FP0118 for Twin Oaks, uh, Phase Two, Unit 2A. Um, JLB Development, uh, is requesting, um, Final Platte approval for Twin Oaks, uh, Unit 2A. Great Oak Place, uh, is currently zoned, uh, planned development. Um, the 12, eight, the 12 lots are about 3.56 acres, but the total Phase Two is 28.39 acres. Um, so, as I said, uh, they submitted the Final Platte application for Phase Two. Um, currently Phase One is still under construction, but it's close to completion. Some of the infrastructure is in place in Phase Two already, and, um, they appear to be continuing the development plan previously, um, done, uh, in this phase. The applicant is requesting Platte approval for 12 of the 79 lots in Phase Two. The layout and configuration of these plots, of these lots are remaining the same. Uh, the applicant has posted a maintenance bond for the project, um, which will cover, um, the infrastructure and water sewer streets, uh, for, for that, for that street, um, that the 12 lots are on. Um, I believe it's been, uh, top coded, uh, in that, in that phase, so, um, that's not, uh, something that they'll have to go back and do. Planning Commission, um, did hear this case on May 29th and, um, approved it.
Questions?
Is there, is there sidewalks in this place?
There will be.
Good answer.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, um, the next is RA0417 for 1033rd Street. Um, this is David Wally of Dallas, Georgia requesting rezoning of property at 1033rd Street from single-family residential to limited industrial. Um, background for this, uh, this came originally in March, um, to Planning Commission. Um, the applicant originally wanted, was proposing to, um, rezone from single-family to limited industrial for the purpose of equipment storage. Um, since, since that time, he's changed, uh, the purpose of his project as he's found another place to accommodate this equipment storage, and at this point, he's now requesting to just have it rezone to limited industrial for future development. Um, by a request of the City Council, it went back to Planning Commission, um, because there was that change that he, uh, submitted to his project that the Planning Commission didn't have the opportunity to hear. Um, he, it was deferred twice by his, uh, by his own request, um, but it did go this past May, I mean, this past May 29th. Um, Planning Commission did, uh, approve, uh, with staff recommendations, uh, approval with conditions, but did add a second, um, stipulation, and that is existing, existing single-family use may continue utilizing Third Street for ingress and egress, but must vacate Third Street access once limited industrial activities slash development begins.
This one's already come up, it's come back and forth a number of times, yeah, I'm familiar with it, I, I don't have any problem or any questions.
I don't see that that third, uh, condition was added to the cover sheet. Only see access to the site shall be provided from Sabre Parkway. No vehicle or access shall be allowed from Third Street, and number two, all access easement shall be provided to the Community Development Director.
It was updated, because the meeting was on the 29th, it didn't get updated till the following day, so, uh, to the 30th, so, uh, I think by the, by before noon, it was updated. We may have our old, old version. But those were the original two conditions that are, um, initially placed, um, recommended by staff.
I see. Okay.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Item number three.
Good evening, y'all, hope everybody's well. Um, Mr. Rex Camp, applying for a certificate of appropriateness for his business located at 209 Main Street. Um, probably about like a year ago, we had a storm come through that took the awnings off his buildings, and, uh, he wanted to replace those awnings with aluminum metal, and, uh, the, um, um, Historic Preservation Downtown Guidelines, um, dictate something other than metal on those buildings. He made his application and, um, staff analyzed it, um, pretty much by the UDC and the Commercial Design Guidelines from Historic Preservation. In your packet, you will have, um, you should have the recommendation that we made to the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, to approve with conditions, and there's, yeah, I'm not gonna read all those if, 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 you know, I can if you want me to, but, uh, pretty much we presented that at the Historic Preservation Commission on the staff level. I think they discussed it for like 30 or 40 minutes, and pretty much voted to approve with staff's recommendation with the conditions that, uh, push away from the aluminum to the canvas, um, awnings. And, uh, he has applied to council for a, an appeal on that decision. Based on that, that's pretty much where we are with it. We have, Mr. Larry Coors is here with, uh, a member of our, our Historic Preservation Commission to, can answer comments or questions if you have any at this point.
I have some questions, Bobby. Um, Mr. Camp owns that entire block of building, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, I think so.
And the business that was affected, that the awning was bought off of, um, there's an awning that's metal that's next to that one, correct?
I think so, yes, sir.
And, and we're not gonna do anything with that one?
Well, it's, it's existing, it's not damaged. Now, if he decides to replace it, then he's still, to get it, when he comes in to get a permit, he'll have to go through the same process.
Right. And I, I guess I understand that part, but this was an act of God, I mean, this was, you know, literally blew, blew away.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't vote on this, obviously, and I haven't spoken to Mr. Camp, um, but, and I understand why we're trying to, to make everything look standard, but it had it not been for the high wind, the awning would still be there. And the awning that's on the building, the business next to him is still a metal awning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bobby, do you have any plans to come to council and ask that, that those, uh, standards be changed for this area where you can have metal awnings?
We, we haven't discussed it. Uh, I think the, the Commercial, uh, Design Guidelines were established in 2009, I think, maybe. Uh, it's, it's a possibility that we can, we can take another look at that, yes.
What they're trying to do is keep the historic features historic, and for a lot of times, a lot of years, we didn't do that, and we allowed things that wouldn't have fit within the guidelines of what went with that building at those times. I read everything Lenise sent me, everything you sent, I read their unanimous decision, and what they're trying to do is preserve the historic nature of the downtown. If you don't start somewhere, you'll never get it done. When you're grandfathered in, you are only grandfathered in until it burns down, it falls down, a tornado comes through, you then cannot build what's not allowed, you know, when there's certain guidelines, right? I think I agree, and I did also, um, interact with Mr. Camp, and we had some communication. I, I'm in agreement with what Historic Preservation has done.
The only problem with it, when you look at the picture, and you're gonna see aren't ready, and part what's required now, it's gonna look kinda weird.
Where, where do you, where do you start? It's kinda like code enforcement, there's some other things downtown that shouldn't be there, but eventually you have to draw the line and say, you know, this is, this is what's required and this is what we are moving toward, you're not gonna get there in one day. We've got a lot to do downtown.
Right, I'm inclined to agree with, with that as well.
And, and, and mayor, our, as, as, as staff, as staff, we don't, we don't have any latitude at all, it, it's, it's gotta be black or white, I mean, it, you know, we, we don't have any kind of latitude where we can say, okay, based on what's left, we're gonna allow this. We don't have that latitude.
The remaining of that block there is, is, is what you, what they're asking for, for right now. So, if you did give him the mail, you still got two different things there. So, like you said, you gotta start somewhere, and if it says you don't put it back like it was because it smelled, what is the argument? Put it up, what they asked, and be done.
Didn't y'all also get an opinion from the Carl Vinson Institute on if they felt like this was the way to address it, or that, that would fit the historic guidelines?
The, the, um, um, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, the, the Design Studio, UGA, we, we sent them the packet, and just to get an idea. And, you know, I, the individual did say that, you know, if, if the metal awnings were, were 50 years old, and I guess, you know, a case could be made that they are themselves historic, but for the type buildings that are downtown in that area, the metal awnings are not, um, appropriate. And, and, and I have that statement in writing. On his opinion.
Other questions, comments? Next.
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, um, revision to the alcoholic beverage ordinance. We have taken our existing ordinance and with the help of the city of, don't throw rocks at me, coach, uh, uh, two or three other adjacent cities that have adopted the, uh, the brewery aspect into their code. Uh, we, I, I put this together, uh, and, and then sent it to David, and, at the, at the 12th hour, I guess you'd say, and, uh, he made it happen, but we've, we've introduced breweries into our alcoholic beverage ordinance, uh, both, you know, breweries, microbreweries and nanobreweries. Uh, the nano brewery is the, um, uh, a brewery that brews less than 2,000 barrels a year. Microbrewery is a brewery that brews less than 15,000 barrels a year, and then brewery is just Anheuser-Busch style brewery. We went ahead and, and, and added the, the, the areas in the zoning code where they would be permissible, um, and we hope we got it, uh, at least we got it legal at this point, so, that's, that's where we are.
And you have met with the applicant, and the applicant knows how they order this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Very nice article in our, our great publication here in Carroll County about our, the possibility of this coming, so, thank you, sir, for that.
Where's it supposed to be?
I think it's gonna be up on Main Street, 407 Main Street.
It's probably the awnings all the way around it.
The applicant's sitting right here.
Where is, where is that? Exactly where is that?
Exactly where? Corner of?
Not Goldust.
Not Goldust. Not straight across from Goldust.
Oh, man.
It would've seemed if y'all were awake.
Oh, yeah.
So North Avenue is dividing this and that, okay, all right, I know where.
It's the building with the roll-up door on it.
Okay, all right.
Bobby, I have a quick question, um, we didn't revise 31 pages, right?
Ms. Leslie, you really don't know, wanna know how I did this?
Well.
No, we did not.
Okay, the reason I'm saying is because I was doing this while I was out of state, so I couldn't run down and get hard copies of anything, I was using the electronic. It's really helpful, only cause I have read this whole ordinance, probably a couple times. If somehow we can have what's being revised highlighted.
You, you want me to shade it, shade the revision into the original document?
Oh. Yeah, when, when we're changing, like the sign ordinance, you know?
I will do that in the future.
Something highlighted as to what is actually being changed, cause sometime it's not, sometimes it is, sometimes it's not always necessary to read the entire ordinance again. I only say that cause sometimes there's, what, 300, 400 pages of things to read, and you may wanna read the whole ordinance, that's fine. Uh, and there are some cases where I only need to know the changes.
Yes, I'll do that in the future.
And, and so that was.
Is that gonna be pink, yellow, white, or what?
I don't care, as long as it looks different.
What do you think?
Hey, the sky's the limit.
Okay.
Microsoft gives you infinite options.
Six, good.
Seven, eight. I like visiting ones pink. Bobby, thank you for your hard work on this, and, uh, we are one step closer, perhaps, if the council votes on this Tuesday night, to, to having a new business in Villa Rica.
That's all I have, mayor, thanks.
Tab D. Vicki Coleman, Parks and Recreation.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The first item that I have before you, this is a recommendation on a contractor as it relates to gutter replacement at Goldust Park. Um, as you'll recall, we, um, had some roofwork done earlier this year, at that same time, we did, um, we accepted bids for, um, our gutter replacement. We received three bids at that time. Um, however, it wasn't until last month's meeting, excuse me, this, the gutter replacement was not in the original SPOLOST, um, list, so, last month's meeting, you were able to amend the project list, and the gutters were added at that time, so this is, in fact, a budgeted item. Um, we received three bids, with the lowest bid being Pride Roofing Inc. at $66,751. Um, I have attached all the information, um, on what originally went out in terms of specs. Staff's recommendation is to move forward, um, with the Garland Rook and Pride Roofing Inc. to complete the replacement on the gutters at Goldust.
Now, this is, these bids are in January, so, um, are they still good?
They, they are good. I reached out to the contractors to make sure that they weren't stale, um, and they confirmed with all of the companies that came out that their numbers were still good.
So, when replacing gutters, um, the other gutters just deteriorated?
They're about 30 years old. We ideally wanted to do them with the, at the exact same time with the roof, but we had to wait until the project list was amended, so, we're bringing it before you today at the first available chance.
Okay. I'll tell you how the gutters got damaged, because, uh, the teams practice against that back wall, at Field Four, which I know you know, so what are these gutters made out of?
Go back to.
Same thing that they were before, cause those gutters have been replaced in 14 years, probably five, six times.
On one wall?
On all the gutters.
Most of the gutters.
And why is that?
All because of base.
Because everybody, I mean, it's, it's a great wall to play pitchback against.
Well, maybe we should do something about that.
Yeah.
You know, one of those nets that.
So which wall, we're talking about the north wall?
Uh, that would be the west wall.
Facing the back of my field?
Field number four.
Is that the west wall?
No, that's the south wall. My only question is, what are, what are we gonna do to try to? My only question is, what are we going to do to try to, at least the gutters on the west side of the building? If we don't build those out of something other than thin gauge aluminum, within six months, they're going to be bent back like they were. It's not, you know, I mean, you're never going to stop coaches and kids that are just out there from throwing things against the wall.
Sure. What I'll need to do is certainly talk to the contractor and really address the specs in that particular area, and to see if there's anything that we can do to provide additional, maybe some additional barriers in that particular place.
Is that possible?
It is. There's a guard that you can put, you know, after we did it the last time, I said, you know, I'm not going to do this again. I didn't. But there's a guard that you can put around those gutters, and it shouldn't be that much more money, but...
Like a wire mesh?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's a heavy wire mesh that you put around it.
Well, we need to do something. Now, you said we couldn't stop kids and coaches from damaging city property, so I'm thinking we either stop them from damaging, or we prohibit the damage in whatever way you're talking about, because I don't think I'm fully understanding what you're talking about, the pitchback.
Almost like putting a wire net over it.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, I mean, you can't, I mean, there's no way, unless you're going to hire more staff, that you could put somebody there to watch that wall the entire time they're out there. And it makes a great wall to throw a baseball against, so...
This second item is related to the master trail plan and establishing a partnership with the Community Foundation of West Georgia. As I've talked to you, as we move forward with planning the trail, implementation is going to take a number of ways. One of the ways we talked about was a vehicle to be able to accept donations, and partnering with the Community Foundation is one of those ways that I think will allow us to immediately, if you will, begin accepting donations for the trail construction and even the amenities that may be associated with the trail. We've had an opportunity to work with this particular organization as a vehicle for raising...
How much was that amount of them?
$190 per cross.
I'm just glad they're moving.
That's right.
So we've had an opportunity to work with this particular organization in the past as it related to accepting donations for some of the city facilities. I thought it would be most appropriate to bring in Ms. Kim Jones, she's the president of the Community Foundation of West Georgia, to talk a little bit about the organization, if you're not familiar, and just to give you a little bit of background on what they do and how it could be beneficial to the city long-term as it relates to this particular project.
They're the collection agency for a lot of charities in the county, are they not?
That is correct.
And then they do grants?
Yes.
Charitable grants and that sort of thing.
So if you, if you just want to, I don't know if you have additional questions that you may want to be able to...
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Jones, and I'm president of the Community Foundation. I'm passing around what I lovingly call "Foundation Propaganda." It's our last annual report. We're currently being audited right now, so that's why we don't have, that's the latest numbers that we have. In addition, I'll address the investment performance insert in that package as well. The foundation has been around 15 years. I've been there since the inception of the foundation. We currently are cash managing $26 million. We cover Carroll, Harleston, and Hurd Counties. We actually have total assets of just a little over $44 million currently. Our primary goal is to make those three counties better serving and better assisting the citizens that live there, and our primary way of doing that is to assist with charitable giving. We manage funds for individuals, companies, nonprofits, churches, governmental entities, because we basically operate off an endowment model. You may be familiar with the United Way model that raises money and gives away, raises money and gives away. We actually raise the funds, our donors place them with us, and then we invest them fairly conservatively, but yet we encourage our donors to give away the earnings, so the principal is always there and always able to earn. What I passed around is our last year investment performance. We actually had a very good investment performance for last year, was 13.8%, and then you see the three-year, five-year, and since inception in 2010. That's inception with this particular investment firm. We recently went out to bid, because we're obviously larger than we were a few years ago, and we will now be changing to Mace Investment Company as of July 1. Their fees are cheaper, and their performance over a same period of time has been a little bit better, so we've been making that change. Couple of questions that I think you might have is how can CFWG assist the city to immediately be able to accept those donations? A couple of things is, in my experience, I used to be on the government side of things, is that sometimes people are hesitant to write checks to a governmental entity, no matter how many times you tell them it's a separate account, it's going to not be commingled, they just don't get that, or just don't want to believe it. And so this gives them assurance they'll be managed separately from traditional city funds. Basically, the belt, what do y'all call yours, the green, the trail, will be on separate account. Okay, we'll call it the trail, Villa Rica Trail, will actually be held in a separate account. So we currently manage 115 different funds, and you would be one of those if you chose to do this. You, the earnings are pro-rata share, so if you have, you know, 10% of the pool, then you would get 10% of the earnings. So then also, the foundations have, we've found out through the years, that some foundations cannot give to a governmental entity. And we have, for instance, with the Quilt Museum in Carrollton, they were, had the opportunity to receive a $25,000 gift, but that could not be given to the city of Carrollton, it had to come through a non-governmental entity, so we actually held those funds for them for an interim period of time. We can take all appreciable assets, we can handle stock gifts for literally pennies on the dollar, so if that's appropriate for a donor, we can handle that. We literally can take anything that appreciates, although most likely, we take, you know, cash is generally what we get. We also have, on our website, where people can give online, so we handle all the credit card fees, all the security issues, dealing with that. We also handle all the IRS required acknowledgements for those gifts. You're required to acknowledge the gift $250 and over. If someone wanted to make an anonymous donation, they could give that to us, and then we could transfer those funds to you guys. We don't include amounts, but if someone wanted to let you guys know, then we can do that either way. And also, because based on the person's tax situation, the donations would be tax deductible. Later on, if the city chose to create its own 501(c)(3) just for the Chicago Trail, the funds could be removed from the foundation and transferred to the 501(c)(3) without an issue at all. In the past, we have assisted the Villa Rica Library. They currently still have a fund with us. We were able to accept their corporate donations and handled some payments to the contractor based on the library staff person's approval. Those bills were paid from us. Just to let you know, we handled the Carrollton Green Belt as well, that was about a $15 million project. Just so you know, the earnings from that project that were earned through the investment pool paid for one mile of additional trail for that project. So the earnings do help. All the funds designated to the trail would, all the funds would stay there with the exception of administrative fee. The foundation would charge 1.25% over the course of the year, so at the end of every quarter, .33 would be assessed to cover our operating cost. Financial statements would be emailed to whoever you guys designate at the end of the quarter, and it shows your current balance, any distributions that were made, and then any gifts made during that preceding quarter. Any balances that you needed to know between those periods of time can certainly be done over the phone via email. I will do one little mouse print in there. Whoever you designate, that is who we deal with. And so if a separate council person, or if a citizen called and asked us to disclose how much money's in that fund, we legally cannot do that, so we only will communicate with who y'all designate that's appropriate. The other thing is, is that for this particular project, the foundation, well, actually, let me say this, as a whole, the foundation does not accept public money. We do not want to handle public money for the simple fact is we don't want to be, our donor records to be exposed to open records requests, and I'm sure you can understand that. We had a board member that worked with the previous, with another foundation, and his donor list ended up on the front page of the AJC, and, which was not good. It basically killed the nonprofit overnight, so we do not handle any public funds. I will tell you one nice thing that we learned, because we did a partnership with the city and a private donor with the Green Belt, is that sometimes, as you all will know, in the course of doing a project of this magnitude, you have to get on private property. And so with the foundation, I know with the Green Belt in Carrollton, we had to replace rose gardens, we had to move a pet cemetery, we had to do some other things. And so the foundation is not restricted to not being on private property, so we actually were able to go in and handle those issues, so the city did not violate the law in being on private property to improve somebody's private property. And I'm glad to answer any other questions that...
We had a very good meeting a couple of weeks ago about this, and the one thing that I didn't hear you say was, can you kind of explain the payout process as we go forward with the project? How that process would move? Would it go through the city, through Sarah? Would it go through...
That's purely up to you guys, how you want to handle it. I know with the Green Belt in Carrollton, basically Erica Studdard was a staff person. She reviewed the invoices, and then they sent them to us, so we basically wrote two checks a month, one to the engineering firm, and then one to the construction firm. We certainly don't have a problem. It's literally a one-page form, you fill in the amount, who it goes to. That comes to us, and we can certainly release those funds to the city, and y'all can pay the bills, whatever's most advantageous for you guys. We do it both ways, and so it really, it doesn't matter to us.
Yeah, I think that's, I just wanted you to touch on that, because that was a question someone asked me, so...
We can do it either way.
What was that percentage, again, you mentioned about, obviously, y'all are doing the job of managing this. What's that percentage of management fee? It's based off the donations, the amount of donations? Will you just clarify that?
It's 1.25% over the course of the year would be what you would pay us. The firm, the investment firm obviously gets paid too, and your earnings come net of their fees. And with this new firm, our fees are point, I think it's .52 basis points. So you're looking at a total of one point, maybe 1.75 total fees over the course of the year.
Mr. Mayor, I would say I'm a big proponent of this also, because I get the question asked to me all the time, how do we form a 501(c)(3)? And it's a difficult process, and if you're just beginning as a new charitable organization, it's even more complicated. This will be a great way for us to build up some type of a history, so that we can determine whether or not it's worthwhile to become a 501(c)(3) for the trail project. And the fees that they're charged are going to be way less than what the administrative cost would be to manage our own fund.
That's a very good point. And the other point is, there are people that I know that would like to donate, but they really don't know what to donate to. And so if someone were to call the Community Foundation of West Georgia and say, we live in Villa Rica, we've lived here all our life, you know, we want to donate a portion, you know, an amount of money, a willing amount of money in our state, then that's an outlet that they would have going through the Community Foundation's order that they may not know of otherwise.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, if y'all choose, we can list it on our website. And so we get a lot of "in memory of" and "in honor of" donations, and so they literally just go to our webpage, click, scroll down there, see the Villa Rica Trail, and put their credit card in, and boom, it goes, it goes from there. And also, I should have mentioned, David brought up a good point, we handle all the tax filings. So once the, once we have the funds, those are basically on our audit, we're audited yearly, and also our 990. And so with a separate 501(c)(3), all of that reporting is on the backs of whoever owns that organization, and so we handle all of that. So that's not a worry you have.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
The next item that I have on the agenda, it is also related to the trail plan. Again, just looking at multiple ways of being able to implement this plan, the Georgia Department of Transportation has done a call for projects for transportation alternative, for its transportation alternative program, which is really an extension of, it's basically the T program, and we use the T program to fund the original trailhead project. But essentially, this call for project is due, the application is due in August, but this item before you is, we're requesting permission to apply and accept funds from GDOT for this particular program, and the types of projects that it specifically looks to fund are your trail projects that you are looking, as any municipality would be looking to undertake. It's trying to go beyond just your road projects, but specifically for smaller agencies. This would be an ideal type of pedestrian bicycle facilities, if you go to the page that talks about the eligible projects. Anything, of course, that may fall under like the Safe Routes to School program, or that may be streetscape improvements, but it really would be ideal. It does require a 20% match, and the funding for this particular project is a minimum of $1 million. So the city, if we are to participate in terms of applying, it would be $200,000 to match to get the $1 million. So you're basically, again, putting in that $200,000 to get, you know, a five times return on what you'd be looking at, the part you'd be putting in essentially.
Two things. Number one is I don't mind applying for it, but I don't, I'm not going to vote to accept it, not seeing it. And number two, I thought that the trail was going to be a private-funded trail around the city with no input from the city as far as monetary value.
Well, I've talked about implementing based on three different ways. One certainly would be fundraising, accepting donations through a 501(c)(3). The other is using the development standards and adopting it into the code. And the other thing was to also look out for additional grants that would be available. So GDOT, for example, the same way we funded the initial part of the trailhead was to go, we had a T grant, which we were funded $500,000, we were required to put the 20% match in. So this is, again, just an extension of what we've already done. So it's looking for multiple ways to be able to implement this project as quickly as possible.
I, too, would like to see as much as we can with private funds, but I think it might be a little bit of a stretch to expect that we could do all of it that way. So I'm open to this, but let me ask this, did, did the Carrollton Green Belt, did they apply for any of this? And the reason I'm asking is, did they say there was any, I'm looking for somebody that's already been down the road, we're going, to say, well, this was the positive on it, but this was the negative? You know, obviously, a negative is, yeah, we have to match it 10%, but often when you're getting funds from the state or federal, there's strings attached, and I just want to know if there was a downside that we should know about.
As far as Goeran, she probably could answer this a little bit better. Theirs was 100% privately funded.
No.
90%?
Yeah.
They got some grant money.
The county, at least the...
Remember when Chris and I went and met with Erica? And I came back and told you that she said that there were two different kinds of grants we could apply for, and one was a real pain? Because when I told you that, you thought, no, I've done that before, and it's not a big deal.
Well, I was doing it as she, as you mentioned that. She said, don't do any T grants. I said, I'm doing, I've already closed, I'm out of T grants. Yeah, so again, this is just an extension of that, and I think anytime you are accepting transportation funds, it's all of the monthly reporting that you had to do, which, at the end of the day, when we were doing our T project and under construction, I still just had to do the reporting every day, making sure that, you know, they were paid according to Davis Bacon. You have to make sure the DBE reports are done every month.
Whatever that is.
With all the reporting requirements that you have to do, and you have to make sure the subs or the DBEs have been paid before you can submit your invoice for a return.
So the pain is for the staff person that's doing it, and the time assumption.
Right.
But you see what I'm saying, then? You know, you weigh whether it's worth it or not, and if the benefit outweighs the pain, then you do it.
A million bucks for 200 grand is...
Actually, that's pretty good.
That's pretty inviting, if you ask me.
That's pretty good.
And average, that's about a mile of trail that's constructed.
Yeah, and that's a lot.
Well, it certainly, it would look that way. But I don't...
It says eligible project pedestrian bicycle facilities.
I certainly can get a little bit more clarification on that. But I think this is really going to be the ideal route, I would certainly say, in terms of implementation.
So, are we saying they're not allowed or motor, is electric same as motorized? That might be something we'd want to know.
Yeah, because we are playing these golf carts.
That's a good point.
Get clarification on that because I know there is certainly some sections that, of right now, what is proposed. But then again, there have been other sections that we've talked about that, in terms of planning, that you can certainly designate some as non-motorized. So, but I can get clarification. So, I mean, really, I guess this is the point. If it's, if you cannot do non-motorized, how do you feel about this? Because this is one, this is probably one of the best options that you really have to move something forward. So, we can just look at designating this in a particular area that would be non-motorized.
Yeah, I think there's just no question that you make the application. We deal with those things as we get.
Yeah, I agree.
Get to it. It'd be silly to get in the weeds right now.
Right.
It does say non-motorized transportation, but get us some clarification.
I'm sure there are sections of the trails that are that way.
The application needs to be made.
Work with that. Okay.
Right. But again, if this is awarded, we're looking at the, it's the 20% match that's required. It's a minimum. I would, you know, my suggestion would be anywhere from a million to 1.2. But, you know, I know we're in the budget time, so that's going to be either the 200 or, 200,000 or 240,000, so.
What's the grant cycle? When will we know if we're awarded it?
The deadline is August 31st. I want to say that the notification may have said in November. I don't...
So, we'll have to budget it for it then?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Take it, ma'am. Tab E. Mr. Pike? Mr. Pike, did you bring your award with you? I would certainly like for you to bring it on Tuesday night if you didn't, so we can... I saw it today. I just wanted to find a way to read that into the minutes. But please bring it on Tuesday night.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're going to be very brief. Most of this stuff is just technical things that we need to clean up and not, a lot of items for a lot of discussion. Our first item is the appointment of a Main Street board member replacing an unexpired term that ends on December 31st, 2020. Ms. Carolene Cox is a downtown business owner, has applied for appointment, and the Main Street Board has made that recommendation. I'll answer any questions.
Great.
I have just, this is just a housekeeping thing. I've noticed that we still, on the application, have the Board of Appeals, which doesn't exist anymore, right? We need to take that off the application. Okay. I just happened to notice it when I was looking at the application.
I guess the only question I have here is on the agenda. It tells us what the Main Street Advisory Board does, but it doesn't tell us who is going to be nominated.
Staff, recommendation.
No, no, no. I'm talking about here, on the agenda. It says, "The seven-member Main Street Advisory Board is appointed by the City Council and works to promote and create a thriving central business district in downtown, downtown Villarica, and along primary entrances corridors into the central downtown business district." But it has nothing about who you want to be on there.
But it's in the packet.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if somebody picks it up out here.
If somebody looked at it.
Okay, that's fine. We can fix that.
I mean, it's not a...
Any other questions? Next item on the agenda is a recommendation from the Main Street Advisory Board to amend the Main Street boundaries or service delivery area as outlined on the map. The purpose for this recommendation by the Main Street Board is to more adequately reflect what most people consider to be the downtown area. Specifically, this has to do with businesses who make applications for specific types of grants or membership programs. Those businesses tend to think they're in downtown, but technically, based on the map adopted initially when the Main Street program was created, they would not necessarily qualify. So, the recommendation is to amend that boundary to better reflect basically what is common standard knowledge of what the downtown area is. I'll answer any questions at this time.
I looked at the map. It made sense to me of who it takes in.
Yeah, I think the proposed map, in my estimation anyway, better represents what is Main Street, so.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is just a clerical item. This map that is in the packet is actually what is in the comp plan. So, the city already has adopted this design or this layout of the DDA boundary. The issue is, because of state law, we're required to provide that to the Secretary of State's office from the DDA side. And apparently, that has not been done. And so, this is just to fix that error. And so, we will ask that this resolution be passed by the City Council. We will submit that to the Secretary of State. Because right now, they have the original boundaries when the DDA was created in 92. And that's not the same boundaries that we operate on in the comp plan today.
So, you're saying that number two is going to declare what the central business district is?
These are two separate items. The first item is for Main Street. The second item is for Downtown Development Authority.
Okay, so what is the central business district?
The central business district map is still the, the original one on the Main Street. It's the central business district, which is the historical boundary. What we're amending is the service delivery area for the Main Street Board and the Downtown Development Authority jurisdictional area.
We're not changing it. We're just submitting what we should have already submitted, right?
For the DDA, correct.
For the DDA.
Questions?
Yes, I'm still concerned about, it says, "Resolution mending the Downtown Development Authority boundary." I understand that. Requires the government body's resolution to include the geographic area within the municipal corporation, which constitutes the central business district. I don't know what the central business district is.
It's, the area that we're identifying is area in the map that is in the agenda packet. It's the area that's light pink and traced in black.
The same map for Main Street?
It's not the same map for Main Street.
Okay, I'm lost. Okay, wait a second.
So, which should be larger? The central business district or the Main Street service delivery area?
Okay. I think we're getting, there's two different items.
I understand. I'm just asking, which one should be larger?
It's about the service delivery area and not which one should necessarily be larger than the other. The Main Street program has a different mission and purpose than the DDA. So, the boundaries are drawn based on what the missions are of each organization.
DDA covers a much larger area though.
Well, your Main Street program is mostly concerned with commercial. DDA does have some overlap in residential components, especially in the historic residential part.
But don't they also go out further? Doesn't DDA go out further than Main Street does?
The DDA picks up residential parts of the community, whereas the Main Street service delivery area does not.
So, do you want, I don't, I've got to look back and just, it's been some days, and look at that map again. I thought I was totally clear that basically, we were just submitting something that's already been designated. This is what we do.
We offer the DDA.
We just need to send it to them.
Correct.
And file it, basically.
There are no changes to the DDA map. This is just a clerical thing that we're fixing so we send a resolution to the Secretary of State's office. We are changing the service delivery area for the Main Street program to encompass what is the commercial area that people consider. So, for example, right now, Evans Barbecue is not in the service delivery area for Main Street. What most people consider, Evans to be in downtown. So, we're just fixing that to more reflect what the community thinks downtown is.
Just comparing the two maps to each other, it looks like the DDA area is much significantly larger than the Main Street.
I'm just trying to locate that map. What is it covered? What's it covered here?
I didn't see DDA.
I don't know how I missed that.
It's at the end of all these resolutions.
Click over on the side. Click on that map, down there with zip map.
Here we go. Here we go. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Next.
The next item on the agenda is a community development grant request from the Thomas A. Dorsey Board for the help, offset costs associated with the annual Thomas Dorsey Festival. This year is the 24th Annual Thomas Dorsey Festival, and the city has participated with the festival pretty much since the inception. And this is just a request for continuation of that support. The remaining balance for the community development grant is $7,630, which is what staff is recommending that we award, that would bring that grant program dollars to zero for this current fiscal year. So, this would be the last grant that we would be able to award for this year.
Chris, my only question is, is this, I know our fireworks went up $500. Does this reflect that increase?
I'm not certain what all is included. This is mostly based on what I've seen in application just for marketing, promotion-type stuff and rental. It doesn't specifically break out the fireworks.
And it's what's left in that account.
Yeah, and it's what's left, yeah.
It was less than they requested, but it's what was left.
Is there a way you could look back from last year and see if there's any other group that asked for this grant last year that we might need to add some more to this account?
Well, this is the last group that has made requests. All the other groups that have been traditionally funded have already received their funds for this year.
Any other questions?
Just in the future, it might be helpful if this map was this way. If I really wanted to understand it, then I wouldn't have to read it sideways. Is it just me? Can't be just me.
Yeah, brands like that too. All of them is like that.
If you can do a 90-degree turn.
Well, so you have to help me with this IT stuff. That's why I have to take a class from Jill.
We got IT.
I think that might change it. Need to go on staff aside.
Item number five.
Item number five is just, item number five is just another technical item. This is a resolution to call, to cause the calling of the election to determine our ability to be able to do redevelopment or exercise redevelopment powers law. This is basically will just allow us to put the question on the ballot in November for the citizens to vote on. Now, this is not authorizing it or anything. This is just saying, we want this added to the ballot in November.
What are redevelopment powers?
Those tabs.
That's the tax allocation district that we've been talking about. And that concludes my agenda items. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Tab F. Pete and group.
Oh, that Jameson.
Got to get used to this right here. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is that good? All right, what I'm bringing for you guys is our annual long-term water quality monitoring that we're required by the state of Georgia to do.
It ain't good that the lawyer got up and left, by the way.
I'm telling you, you need to wait. So, basically what this is, back in 2001, Carroll County was required to do a watershed assessment. And because Villarica is part of Carroll County, we were included in that assessment. This came down from the federal government and then to the state and then passed along to us. So, based on that study in 2001, we had to start doing long-term monitoring in 2007. So, for 11 years, we've, we had to test our water quality. This is raw data from our streams, lakes, to see what the makeup is. So, I'm asking you guys to adopt or to approve CCR Environmental to do this for us. They've been doing this for three years. The reason why I'm wanting to do this is because they have, we have to go back and do trends analysis. So, we're going to go back to the previous four years, look at that, I guess, samples and compare them to what we're sampling to this and get us the trends and see what our makeup of our creeks and streams are. So, they started this in 2001 with West Georgia College, and that's who I recommend that we use.
Okay, how long is the 15,645? How long does that take us into the future? Is that just...
This annual.
Annual college?
Yes. This is an annual contract. It goes, and it's split between two budget years. We start January, we start June 1st and then ends May 31st.
I know. You first stated that this is done in Carroll County?
No, we were part of the Carroll County watershed assessment in 2001.
Okay.
As all cities were in Carroll County. So, each city now is mandated by the state to do water quality sampling. So, Temple, Villarica, everybody has to do this.
I guess my question, pretty much, is because we're in Douglas County and Carroll County, does that mean any difference than, say, Temple?
No, Douglas County does the same thing. We do share the Dog River Basin and Town Branch, which is the Meere Lake section. So, you know, we're still in the city limits, if that makes sense. But they're mandated just like we are. And a lot of this does go back to being part of Atlanta metro area, the North Georgia Water Planting District. That's one reason why we're having to do this, because they consider us part of the metro area because of Douglas County. But even if we're not in Douglas County, we still have to do it because of the Carroll County water assessment. So, either way, we have to do it.
This was a budgeted item and funded.
Budgeted item, professional service. Yes, sir.
Would you call this an unfunded mandate? In other words?
No, ma'am.
You guys do it, we got to pay for it, right? You're nodding over there. I mean, we have to do it.
I mean, we have to do it. If we don't do it, it's enforceable through our wastewater treatment plant. They can hold our permit.
It's an unfunded mandate. Got the answer. Good.
So, I mean, we have to do it. It's a state mandate. I mean, if we do it, we don't.
Right. Got it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all. That was painless.
I'll wait till Tuesday night. This is just the first round.
I was going to say, you're probably glad you're not HR today, huh? Because that one was painful. That was painful.
Follow that, Charlie.
Yeah. No brawl. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This afternoon, I'd like to talk about the purchase of a budgeted remote control sewer inspection camera for the Distribution and Collections Department. Purchase of self-contained remote camera system will allow us to do this in-house on any sewer line, four inches or larger. And with all the infrastructure studies and upgrades and seeing what's there and what's not, and what matches on our maps and what doesn't, this is going to be an important part of that. Currently, we sublet this kind of work, and that can run anywhere from $150 to $300 an hour, depending on the complexity of it. And that's going to be a lot more of that time being done. This camera will let them go 650 feet into any sewer line, four inches or larger. And we looked at some that were less expensive and more expensive. This is a middle-of-the-road that will meet all the requirements that they need. It's got a really good camera system. And the particular thing we liked on this was the screen you can view it on. It's one of the few you could really see in the bright sunlight if you're outside working in it. You don't have to be finding shade to work on it. This was a budgeted item and on this state contract, it came in at $56,670. This was a budgeted item and on this state contract, it came in at $56,675, which was $8,237 less than was budgeted for it. And staff recommendation would be that we try to get this purchased.
Did you look at water cameras or just just see it all?
We, we looked at, there was four different companies that came. Three of them brought them and showed them to us. The low end of the spectrum was, I think, in $38,000 range. We looked at some other ones that were in the $90,000 range. And this had the items that are needed for what they need to do it without being excessive and wasn't over the top. The, the less expensive ones just didn't have the distance and the capability that this one would have.
Charlie, I see this came in at $8,000 below what was budgeted. My question is, you, you say in, in your cover sheet that sometimes, well, I guess always, we've been subletting this for up to $300 an hour. Have you ever looked at what it cost us to do that annually, subletting that workout?
It's not terribly, it hasn't been, you know, it would probably, if I was guessing, I'd say it'd be somewhere in the $5,000 to $10,000 range on a normal year. But the thing that's going to get so expensive is as we go into this, looking into everything, because we're trying to verify pipe sizes and because most of the time what's on our maps isn't what's in the ground and this will let us see that. And that's going to be very labor and time intensive. I don't think it'll take long to pay for it.
And, and I guess also I'm, I'm thinking about the fact that maybe sometimes we don't even do this work when we should because we don't want to pay the sublet work. So, I'm always in favor of, of us having our own. But I wanted to see what that comparison was. But I think in the long run, this is the right thing to do.
It is and it, like I said, it just gives them another tool in their arsenal that, you know, we can, we have a small utility trailer. We're going to put this in. It's going to be dedicated to that, to take care of it without the weather.
Okay.
We already have that trailer. That's handed down from one of the inmate crews. And it's a really big, good asset to them and it's going to, it will more than pay for itself in the next couple of years with all the work we got to do.
I think so too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item number three.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a request for engineering design and permitting services to Carter and Sloot for water system improvements at Stone Street, Highway 71 and Norfolk Southern Railroad. And in particular, that project would consist, we have a 10-inch water line that is actually ends near the Ford dealership on Stone Street at 7, Highway 78. And this design and permitting would be focused on trying to do a bore under the railroad and continue that, extend that 10-inch water line to the north side, on the north side of the railroad and, and loop the system on the other side. And of course, that size line right there would be very beneficial to us both short-term and long-term. Short-term, it would give us considerable capacity and flow for fire protection. And also would allow us to loop our system. In the big picture, we'd like to take advantage of all the 12-inch mains and 10-inch mains that we have. And ultimately, in the big picture, to develop a loop all the way around the city. So, north, south, and east and west. And, and this would be a beginning on, on looking toward the bigger picture as well.
Pete, is it fair to say that this is not a matter of if, but when we're going to do this? I mean, we've been looking, and I know the city's talked about trying to figure out a way to get more pressure on that side of the tracks for 14 years. So, this is something that's, that's long overdue.
Long overdue.
Have said you want to engage Carter and Sloot.
Sloot, yes.
Is that just a choice? Do you have other people involved?
We have an existing contract with them with the water system improvements and this would be an addendum to that for additional services. So, and they've had quite a bit of experience dealing with the railroad and being successful getting permitting on borders.
Okay, and in the beginning, you say not to exceed 15,000 and when you get down into it, you're talking about $65,000 to $75,000.
So, this is just for the, the request right now is for them to do the design and permitting. And then once, once that's accomplished, when we go out to bid for a contractor to, to do the actual work, that's kind of what the, the price range. And these were some of the, the numbers that the engineering firm gave us, preliminary numbers they've already given us for that construction.
There, there's one number that's missing on here and that's how much Norfolk Southern is going to charge us to go onto the railroad.
I can't answer that.
I know you can. I just want to, I want the council to understand that there is another cost that
What I can tell you, that Matt Smith with Carter and Sloot informed me that if we stay in the right of way, which would be on Stone Street, since it is a crossing there, that it would lessen the fee that we would have to pay.
Hallelujah.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so the $65,000, if there's no rock, if there's rock, estimated at 92, but then we have to pay something, but we don't know what we have to pay them.
Well, I can't tell you.
You can work on them.
Yeah. Okay, is this in the budget?
Yes.
It is a budgeted item.
Came out of line out.
That's right, so we can do this, so we can get this stuff done.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's bring Nick up because he always wants us to buy new vehicles.
Item number four, Nick. And while Nick's on the way up here, I just want to pat him on the back. If y'all have noticed, our gateway landscape project at Highway 61 and 78 looks a whole lot better. He sprayed it, supervised putting out the pine straw, and I think he's replaced, how many shrubs?
At the moment, about 30.
About 30 shrubs. So, it looks, I've had several people already comment that it looks a lot better.
That happened in the last week? Oh, that's why I haven't seen it yet. Okay. Make sure to take a look.
Thank you, by the way, and good evening. I'm here today to request to purchase a new vehicle. This is not a budgeted item though, is the catch. This vehicle will provide the building inspector with a safe and suitable vehicle to drive. She, the vehicle that she is currently assigned is not quite adequate for her. The staff has obtained three quotes from available vendors. What the staff recommends is we purchase a pre-owned lease turn-in from Don Rice Ford for the price of $15,497. We'll have 50,000-mile warranty left on that. And also, they're going to throw in a 12-month bumper-to-bumper that will cover anything. I've looked at the newer vehicles and there's really three prices on buying one new. They also had a ruby red one on the lot for $23,000. I reached out to Allen Vigil. They had one on their lot that was white. That was $23,491. And I reached out to a few other dealerships that just didn't have any of these escapes on the lot. So, the only other option now would be, we could purchase it through the state bid and that would take about, right now, build prices or build times are taking about five months.
What kind of warranty do you want on the new ones?
100,000 mile. Well, you, if you purchase 100,000 miles, you can purchase any warranty you want.
Okay.
Some standard is a five-year, 60,000-mile warranty. But since this is a certified pre-owned, they've extended that to a six-year, 100,000-mile warranty.
I only had one question and am I asking for too much detail? We, right now, what we have is a pickup truck. We're going to an Escape. Obviously, that's different, more of an SUV instead of a pickup. What is it that isn't adequate about the current vehicle? I didn't
It's difficult for
It's a shared vehicle.
Well, if it, if it's shared, I just didn't know why that wasn't in it. It says it's not adequate and I'm like
It's too big. I thought it was a shared vehicle.
Okay, well, asking for too much detail. Tell me later.
Nick, you said you had three bids. I only see two bids in here.
The third one I didn't include, which, I mean, it, it's included per se. The Allen Vigil quote, that's a state, he just scribbled on a state contract, which I should have, I should have went ahead and added in a blank worksheet. He added $1,350 on top of the state bid price. So, that's the difference between state bid and Allen Vigil. The state bid price would be $22,141. But again, we'd have to wait for the, around, around a five-month build time if we did that.
Mr. City Manager, where we going to get this money from since it's not budgeted?
What we're planning to do, we, we've already purchased a vehicle for this person. They're a new hire. So, we have a brand-new
2017 F-150 that will actually take the place of a capital item request that was going to come
That's right.
That was going to be presented for the next year's budget. So, we'll, instead of, we'll actually be saving money in the long run if you kind of think about it that way. Instead of buying a brand-new truck, we'll transfer that truck to a department in need, purchase a certified pre-owned. She doesn't, it doesn't get driven very often to our lot, but it'll be a good vehicle that we'll have in our fleet. It'll match our fleet. It's white.
So, we're swapping $15,000 for roughly $21,000?
Correct.
But the driver's already had an incident in the truck. Just a minor mirror incident, but it's not going to get better. So, we, we've got to do something. So, putting them in a smaller vehicle is the safe thing to do.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tab G.
Three minutes.
I've already missed my goal.
Three minutes each.
All right, this is the abridged version of the financial update for April.
Oh, no, not a PowerPoint. Queen of the PowerPoint.
All right, go to the next slide. This is just a quick update on the business activity. This is year-to-date through April. Water and sewer, you can see compared to at the end of April of 2017 to 2018, we have 51% improvement in the bottom line there. Bringing in more revenue with the rate increases and our expenditures are where they're at. But you can see we've cut our loss significantly. Sanitation and solid waste actually looks better than it did last month. As last month, we were seeing greater loss than we had in 2017, but now we're holding steady, which is good because we have more personnel and higher tipping, excuse me, higher tipping fees in 2018. Any questions on that? We'll see the detail on Tuesday. Okay, next.
The one that you have in the packet, we got on solid waste depreciation in 2017 was $3,300. This year, it's 20, almost $26,000. Where the big jump?
We've added new dump trucks to the fleet.
Okay.
All right, this is the update on the senior discount customers. We previously had, had 670 of the qualified discount customers. Well, that was all seniors over 65. As of last week, we had received 301 applications. 259 of those qualify. So, that's 39% of that original number. We still have 22 that, that applied that did not qualify because their income is too high. And then we have 20 that are disqualified because they still haven't gotten us complete information.
And they reached out to those 20, so they're going to complete it?
Staff has, yes. Okay, last slide. This is our self-funded insurance update. So, we started this in October. This is now through seven months. You can see on the left, those are the actual checks written to United Healthcare in 2017. That's money they get to keep in their pocket whether we actually spend all that money or not based on claims. The middle column shows what we've actually paid in administrative costs and reinsurance fees to our third parties and plus the claims we've actually paid. So, in the first seven months, we have a saved, well, I want to say a cash outlay difference of $224,000.
Tom, do you feel comfortable that we have moved past the point where our savings were generated through prescriptions? Because you felt like that, that the first part of that was just
Stephanie's not here and she would be better able to answer, but I wouldn't say that we really moved into any medical savings yet. What, what I do know that is not here is we're getting a little bit of an idea of what the lag is between the, the event, you know, the medical provision and the payment. And it's significant. It's between $50,000 and $100,000, I think, at any one time is out there sort of going through the process. And especially with, in this arrangement, Healthscope is very aggressively trying to subrogate claims. So, if, if they're presented with a claim and they think there's some way they can get somebody else to pay for it other than us, then they're not paying it and they're going after somebody. That's not necessarily great for the employee in the short run, but it's good for us in the event that they do find somebody else that's actually liable. But that's part of that lag. That's, that's building this unpaid set of claims that's working its way through the process. So, we, so we, we're not 200 grand better off if we were to stop the program because we would go into a carrier and then we'd still have this process that would continue and we'd be paying out money for a couple of months.
And I put asterisks all over my Microsoft face, so I got to, I have to get with Jim now so I can get those all over. I really didn't do that. But the, the one thing I would like to emphasize obviously is in our cash, in the first part of your presentation, our water sewer fund, at this point last year, we were $619,569 in the red. Correct?
Yes.
At this point, this year, we are $1.3 million in the black.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
About the senior discounts?
Uh huh.
Do you foresee in the future of going up on the income limit?
To me, that's up to council. I know we keep talking about the 50%, but that was a complete
Out of the, I understand.
Out of the air, yes. So, I don't personally have a target of 50,000, of 50%, excuse me, since that was a complete guess.
Any other questions?
It's one of those numbers we pulled out of the air that we will forever regret.
I don't know that we regret it, but you may even regret it more.
It became, it became fact whether we wanted it or not. Okay, item number two.
Okay, this is the proposal by Raph Telus, who did our utility rate study last year. This is two parts. First part being to, to have them do a tap fee study for us, basically do the, the math behind that and tell us what our tap fee should be. Especially with the growth starting to happen again, we need to make sure that our tap fees accurately represent our costs. And the second piece of it is to have them expand the model that they did for us last year. Especially with us looking towards the future, how much debt can we take on? Can we afford to pay that debt back? So, we've asked them to basically expand their projections from 10 years to 40 years now that we know a few more details. So, we, we did this last summer. I think Tom's first week, we met with them. So, we know a little bit more now that we could include in the model for better projections.
Is it really worthwhile to go to 40 years considering the way things change on a regular basis?
The question that we can't answer is not so much what do we need to do, because we're slowly getting a handle on that. The question is, what, what can we afford to do? We can borrow any amount of money, just about, but we can't pay back any amount of money. And when, when the repayment gets beyond 20 years, it becomes prohibitively expensive, just like a mortgage. You know, if you can do a 15, your light year is better off than a 30. And I need to know that number. And I don't know how else to know that number, but it may be that when they get into the nuts and bolts of it, they come back and tell me the same thing and say, well, you know, it's really not practical for us to go beyond 30 years. But, right, but we ask them to do 40 and we'll see. But I could see us taking 10 years or longer But I could see us taking ten years or longer to fix the problem. And if there's a thirty-year payback on the other side of it, we're at forty years. That's sort of how I got to the number.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know. I just, I just need better numbers because we're walking into some really dangerous territory because of the debt on the West Plant. We can't overextend because there is a limit to what we can pay back. And it's either rates, property taxes, right? And if we mess up and we overextend the rate part, you're not gonna be happening.
You're not gonna be.
I'm not gonna be happening either. So I want us all to be happy.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Tab H, Mr. Barber.
Alright, here we go. So we've hired Brennan. He's looking at the G, um, the lift stations and as part of that is looking at our GIS information. You've also twice now approved having someone come in here and help us. Mike the first time and Jasmine the second time. What that has unearthed is a large amount of GIS data. It's not necessarily all great and not necessarily up to date and not necessarily a hundred percent accurate. But we have a lot of data, lot. I don't know if some of it, Pete, help me, some of it came from the Woodard and Kern days, I think. Some of it predates that. Some of it we done some way here, I don't know how. But we have demoed an online platform that will help us organize that information into a place and give us the added benefit of making it available through the internet to our staff as we allow it and to the public as we allow it. Huge. And when we talk about GIS, it can be just about anything that, that's geographical. So it could be things other than water and sewer. So on top of that, it's really inexpensive. If you looked at the annual cost, I mean, this, this is a low, a low dollar outlay for functionality that I think we're gonna be just really excited about, if you get excited about GIS. And a year from now, if we, if we get this implemented, if you approve this and we implement it in a year, from that point, looking back to two, two years before then to when I got here, it'll be night and day.
That's true.
Different. Not that we didn't have the data, it's just that we had it in a place and a form that we couldn't use it.
And nobody could find it.
And this will be, not just where we can use it, but highly usable and even publicly usable. Which to me, that's a, that, that could be, this could be one of the most significant changes of anything we've proposed so far.
Counties that have and cities that have GIS systems that are active are light years ahead of what we are.
And I, I can tell you that if we do this, Bobby, help me. If we do this and a year we implement this, we will have the best public data in the county.
Period, yep.
Right?
County?
County, in the county. You like that?
Yes, sold.
Anyway, I mean, we're behind the curve, but y'all are making decisions to do things that aren't just gonna help us get caught up. I mean, we can, we can get out there on, on the edge of what's available and some of it's pretty good. And y'all, y'all have said to me a lot of times something about how much money we spend on engineering and blah, blah, blah. Well, this is gonna be a beneficiary of that because y'all have bought a lot of data. You may not have realized it, but you have, a lot of the money that you've approved expenditures of has generated GIS that this will allow us to take advantage of.
I can understand the ten thousand dollar one-time charge, but what does the six thousand dollars a year get us?
It's the plat, we're paying for the platform for the license. So there's a guy behind this that's gonna be maintaining this thing as we go forward. And I don't know how long we're gonna have Jasmine, but if you think about it from her perspective, she's gonna leave Villarica potentially having imple, implemented this, right? So, pretty, pretty cool for her too, potentially.
If I recall, if I recall when I read this, wasn't this something that was also gonna benefit everybody when they're out in the field working? Am I recalling what I read?
It's internet-based.
So when they need information and they're out there, it's there to go to?
It's, it's coming right out of the cloud, isn't it?
Yep.
Make us more efficient too.
Along with the rain recently.
Right. Anyway, so that's where we're headed if you're good with that. And, and again, this is back to our relationship with Brennan. This is where this came from. So the way this went down is we have some paper maps y'all paid for back in the day. He went, he saw them, found the company that made them. One of the employees is this guy.
Wow.
Saying, right? So added benefit to what we're doing. Having, hiring Brennan, I think is gonna turn out to be a extra base hit. We're, you know, we're working on the lift station stuff and.
I can relate to extra base hit, can't you? Hopefully it's a home run.
Yeah, it may not be a home run, but this, it could be an extra base hit. This is, this could be a good one.
Next.
Alright, number two.
Three. Last, yeah, two.
Number two is an IGA with Douglas County. This is for the installation of the warning signal on Connors up at the water tower at the Waffle House that would allow people who are traveling south on Connors across Mirror Lake Boulevard, Liberty Road, Pumpkin Town, whatever that thing is right there, to see that there is a train blocking the crossing. So that they don't have to drive down to the bottom of the hill to see the train and turn around in those driveways. That's the whole point of this thing.
Don't put one on Cleckon Street too?
The understanding was that um, they would uncouple the train for a long, when it was there for long periods of time at Cleckorn Street.
But not at Connors.
And not in Connors. So the concession was that they would, we put this signal at Connors Road in lieu of them uncoupling the train. So I have people in the neighborhood that call me and uh, tell me when the train's blocking that intersection, Cleckorn Street for a long period of time. Now, that'll always be a sidetrack, so we're not talking about twenty-minute intervals. But uh, there are, there are times in the last couple of weeks where it's blocked for days at a time. So uh, I provided that number that we're supposed to call uh, to the council and uh, that supposedly is logged and uh, so that we'll know how many times the train has actually been blocking the Cleckorn Street and/or Connors.
Connors is a major.
It's paid for by Douglas County Splot, Tom?
I believe this was budgeted two years ago, uh, at seventy-five thousand dollars. It's just taken this long to get it done, am I right?
Coming from, on that, that go to get on.
We'll look at it.
Okay, I think it was budgeted a few years ago.
How much of the cost is Douglas County picking up?
It came with, they won't break it there, but they'll break it at the other.
Yeah, I guess what he just told me.
Talking about breaking that, that clear.
No, she was saying Connors was a straight through, I said Cleckon Street is too, cause you got, you know, the ambulance and you got film and that kinda stuff.
That's why they're supposed to be breaking the train.
Okay, alright.
I'm gonna give him this something.
Alright, number three and number four are related to the T-Splosts. We need to give them a project list, speaking of Carroll County, and we need to approve an IGA. And then they are going to pass a resolution to put it on the ballot similar to what Chris presented earlier for redevelopment powers that you guys are gonna need to approve. We don't have to do that part. We're not the one putting the T-Splosts on the ballot, the county is. But we do have to have the IGA, we do need to give them a project list. I wrote the project list, try not to be real specific, but we may wanna be broader. So I'm open to suggestions about additions to that list. If you'll give them to me before Tuesday, I'll put them in there.
It's pretty broad, I mean sidewalk construction.
I try to, but it's like everything else. If you look at it, something might just pop in your, in your head. If you just shoot me an email or a text, I'll add it in there. David, you got comments on the IGA? You good with that?
Yeah, the IGA itself is good and, and I would just emphasize the fact to leave it as broad as we possibly can. So that you don't, cause seven years is a long time. What you may think we need to do today may be different seven years from now.
The good and bad of the broadness of it, the broadness gives us flexibility, but it doesn't help us selling. Right? The specificity might help us selling, except that we're not supposed to sell. We're supposed to just educate. So I'd say we err on the flexibility side. Hope we can get it passed.
I don't see Godcart paths in here. I would like to add, Tom and I attended the meeting last night at, down at the courthouse that uh, the county conducted. And I asked Chairman Smith if he would be, okay, we'd come into one of our council meetings and he said he would. I think they'd be benefiting in that, uh, because this is a county-wide project. And I, it, it affects Villarica in a big way, but it also affects the county and not just in the area of transportation. And I think that's the thing that I would like for the citizens of Villarica to be able to see uh, and hear from, from Chairman Smith. So uh, if the council is receptive to that, then I will uh, discuss that further with, with Chairman Smith and find an appropriate time for him to come to a future council meeting.
So there's a number involved to this. Right now, we get splosts from both counties in a quantity sorta kinda roughly at a hundred grand a month each. This is another hundred grand a month.
For five years.
The difference is, is that the current splosts hits a project list that's all over the place. Recreation, administration, public safety, transportation, blah, blah, blah. So what we're doing now is we're putting about three hundred and sixty grand in each of the two splosts project lists per year for roads and then adding to that the LMIG money, which is about one eighty. So that's nine hundred grand, right? In this upcoming year, this is gonna be one point two by itself. So if we leave the three sixty in Douglas, we'll continue to get the one eighty. If we add one point two million to that and, and then reallocate the three sixty that's on the Carroll side, that effectively frees up three sixty of capital on Carroll, but increases the amount we'd be spending on roads by eight hundred and forty grand, which is almost double. Does that help?
It does.
So basically, this is almost gonna double our investment in roads and free up three sixty in additional capital. Okay. If you have questions, come see me. Um, so now we've got three discussion items. One on council meetings, one on the sign ordinance and one on the welcome center. The council meeting item has come up a couple of different ways. One was Councilman McPherson has asked that we get off of first Tuesdays because of the Carroll County meeting day. And um, secondly, twenty-five items in a night is too many for me. Y'all may just really be getting into this.
No, it's.
But there is, this is a lot of staff work. It's more than I can proof. I, I just don't, I don't have good quality control over this many things. And so I, I mentioned sort of this as an aside in the, what the first budget workshop that we talked about no work session and two meetings, which, which theoretically would maybe cut the agenda in half for each meeting. I just don't feel like the, the work sessions are as big of a time saver.
I agree.
As they need to be to make them work worth this, because we're not getting this enough stuff on consent to me to make it worth doing.
And it's just too long between actual meetings for us to actually, right?
Right now, Alan, who came to us about the billboard thing, has just gotten his lease through me and David. You gave it to me when, Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
So he's gonna wait a month, right? Cause he, he missed about three or four days, the deadline.
Alright, so we, if we meet, let's just say that we're gonna meet the first and third Monday. Are you gonna dictate what can be on the first Monday and the third Monday? Or are you gonna just, as.
I, I wouldn't.
Okay, I'm just asking the question. I, I wouldn't either, but I'm, I'm just asking the question.
I would, the, the question is gonna be how far in advance do y'all have to have it?
Well, we gotta give some thought to it, obviously, so we can have it that, that day.
So I gave you, I gave you the calendar that Sarah put together to help us do the budget planning, the scheduling. But it looks to me like first and third Mondays work, second and fourth Mondays might work if we're gonna try to get off of Tuesdays like.
I didn't have a problem with Tuesdays. It was the fact that we always conflicted, yeah, we always, yeah, we always conflicted with county commission and just like him having the county commissioner come and do a presentation. Normally, he could not come unless he's gonna miss his meeting, he's the chairman of it.
Going to another Tuesday is probably not cool, especially two other Tuesdays.
Yeah, I like the idea of uh, two meetings a month and I, and I personally like Monday and the first, third Monday uh, and doing away with a work session.
David, how's it work?
First and third Mondays works out fine with me. I don't have any other meetings those months.
Let me ask you this then. Do we want to keep it at six o'clock for both of them or one of them at three and the other one at six? I don't know the answer to that, so that's why I'm asking.
If it's a council meeting, I think it needs to be six so the people can show up.
I'm saying one at six and one at three.
But they're both gonna be regular council meetings.
I disagree, that's what I'm asking the question about.
But we also need the data well in advance to be able to go over it real good.
How much advance are you referring to?
A week.
Okay, you'll have two weeks.
I personally like, I personally like six o'clock. I'll, you know, it's, it sounds better and I know a couple of staff people are going, man, I can't believe you're saying that, but um. Six, yeah, for both of them, because I mean, it's just, you know, it's not fair to our constituents because you know, most people work and can't be here at three o'clock.
I'm still trying to figure out the days on.
Yeah, both be council meetings, so I think six is the thing.
Usually it's Thursday and Tuesday, so you know, okay, don't go out of town during that week, right? And you'll be at most meetings. I'm thinking it's gonna be a little bit more complicated not to miss a meeting with them being at different, I don't know.
You'll have a week in between each one and every three months, you'll have two weeks between two of them.
Um, and we're gonna have to have information in advance enough mainly because with it falling on a Monday and then you've got the whole weekend before, if you run into any problems in your packet and you have questions, that's not the time you can talk to anybody on the weekend. You're not gonna get any staff answers on the weekend.
I think Tom can determine when the, the turning date for all the department heads could be or should be.
Yeah, what's gonna happen is if we go to first and third Mondays, after the first Monday, we would have to have stuff turned in by Thursday of that week for the next agenda. Then we'd send it out on Friday and then you'd have it a week. So for you to have it a week, a real week.
She brings up.
I guess once it gets rolling, that, that, that's, that'll make more sense, but right now it seems like.
Well, what it would do, what it would do for staff is you would have a council meeting and a, and an agenda deadline.
Same week.
In the same week, which will give you two, a week off every other, you know, every other week, which would let us do vacation and stuff and not have to worry about, you know, am I gonna miss something?
But hopefully the meetings will be shorter so the, everything.
Yeah, cause otherwise you're gonna screw up Monday night football.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna get the data a week in advance, which is a week before the meeting.
Two-hour meetings. What?
We're gonna get our information a week in advance.
That's what I think you want.
Yeah, because we.
Yeah, because we need, if we find stuff, we like to ask all about.
It'll be hard.
Well, the reason that we'll have to have it further in advance is because there is no work session. We are going to be voting on it when we meet.
Yeah.
Right, but there's a flip side to that, too. We'll be meeting so often that you're not, you're not really having that much data to cram on. I don't know when staff needs to have it, but I'm thinking for me, I could have it by the Wednesday before the Monday meeting.
I might, too. I really can't digest it. I'm not sure until we do it, I'm not sure I'll really have a feel for how it works. I will say on the master calendar, we're listing Labor Day as the end of May, which is Memorial Day. Somebody needs to switch that. There's no Labor Day at the end of May.
In Canada.
All right, you ready for another one? So that's, that's for y'all to think about and then we'll, once I get some feedback, maybe we can bring that back. David, I don't know, how long do we have to notify to change this? Is this like a month in advance?
I think probably a month in advance would be good, just to give the public notice. I don't know that there's a magic requirement to it. I think you can do it at any given council meeting.
So July? Well, the reason I'm asking this now, that's important.
I think you could probably shoot for doing it.
In August.
July or August would probably be better.
Okay, good, because July, third fireworks.
We already pushed that meeting.
To the test.
So.
Will, will that Monday work okay with the way the other things fall like PMZ and historic preservation? Do we have to fit certain orders?
We tried to catch all that in that calendar, so.
Looking at the calendar here, doesn't look like there are any other meetings.
And you're available. We kind of knew.
Okay, next, next item is the sign ordinance. We had an issue on the primary day where folks involved in the campaigns came to the, two of the, or three of the polling places, which are all city parks. They maintained the 125-foot or whatever the buffer is, 100, what is it?
150.
150, whatever it is, some, some distance. They maintained that, but they put the signs on the, on the city property. My understanding is, is that no, no signs can be put on somebody's property without permission and to my knowledge, you guys had not explicitly given anybody permission to do that. So I told staff to pull them. So some of y'all got some heat over that because of practice, that's evidently been allowed in the past. David and I have talked. We can make an exception, but it can't be content-based.
Right.
It was sort of willy-nilly. If we let it happen, we could restrict stuff about the size and where and when and all that kind of stuff, but not what. So we can't do it exclusively for political because that's content. It'd be anybody could put anything as long as it met the other criteria. I personally don't want to get in the middle of that, so just between me and y'all, I don't want to change it. I'd rather not allow it on our property unless there's an exception that you guys make, like the example I gave where we sell advertising and we allow signage on a baseball field. Do we even do that anymore? That's like when I was in Little League, so that was 100 years ago, but.
We've never done it here.
You know, if we did something like that, then I could see y'all doing that.
I can see as liberally as it is.
I want y'all to weigh in on it because I know there were some, some of y'all got beat up pretty good about that.
Yes, some of us did.
There's polling places all over the state. I've lived in a couple of different states, not a lot, but it seems that they've always allowed candidates to be, you know, not leave it up incessantly. Once voting starts, for it to be available to advertise those candidates, free speech to put out, you know, vote for me on the days that voting is allowed at a location. We've had no problem with people putting out obscene signs because everybody kind of knows the reason they're putting up signs is because there's an election. I would like to, I think we ought to have an exception. I can't, I'm trying to, I don't know if there's sign ordinance anywhere in the state that doesn't allow them at polling places just because I always see them everywhere there's a polling place, wherever we are in every city.
My suspicion is that they're not allowed, it's just not enforced.
That, that's what I was going to say. My guess is it's not allowed. It just happens and nobody says anything. I, I, I wasn't here, I didn't see the number of signs that went out and I didn't get any phone calls about it, but I am inclined to, to agree that the policy that we have is sufficient.
So will that mean if a candidate's there, like many of them do, holding a sign, waving to their constituents, are they, would that be illegal for a candidate to be there holding their sign and waving? Because I mean.
Better be a 150-foot away.
Well, if a tax service was holding up their signs out there, we don't prevent that, right?
No, we do not. You know, I, I would suspect if somebody is standing there walking up and down the sidewalk with a sign, that, that there'd be no reason for us to enforce.
Well, there's no sidewalk at most of our places, so they would probably be on city property.
They'd be on a parking lot, yeah.
I would just like to add that if we're going to do this, I think the problem is that we need to be consistent. And so I would just ask that we add that to the application and let the applicants, the people that are running for, for local offices and anybody that we can really know what the policy is to the extent that we can.
I would also add, I, literally, I just got a, a request at the end of the day yesterday because we mentioned this to our staff, that they're having an event and they want to post signs at, out at the V-Plex. I would also point out something else. It's usually our staff that has to go clean up all the signs the next day. It's not as, it's a situation where people come back and get it. Our staff is literally doing the cleanup after all of this, so I would also point that out, that it, you know, puts a burden on our staff as well.
I think if candidates are, if candidates were told, this is our, and they were educated about it, because I'll tell you what, we get ours picked up all over the city. We know the candidates, people that do that, right? They're responsible. It just seems to me this is the elections, this is the American way. People put out their signs. I know we have limits around the city, which I think is appropriate because they do become litter if they're not picked up and.
That clear as mud.
Well, I mean, how do you want to proceed?
I want to proceed with no signs, period, on the right of way and no signs on city property.
All right, and Councilman Carter, you said pretty much the same thing.
Yes, I did. Enforce it the way we have it.
Councilman McDougal, Ms. Marksman?
All right, with me.
Are you going to be the dissenting vote?
Yeah.
And can we make sure that we put it on whatever information we get out to the candidates?
We need to talk because I don't even know what that looks like. We'll, we'll look at that. So y'all continue to talk about that and if the, if the sentiment changes, then we need to go back and talk to David and make sure that we do something that's legal.
Yeah, our ordinance does have a provision where people can come to the council and ask for permission to put up a sign. And we have that occasionally when, with the rodeo comes, somebody comes and asks your permission to put up a sign on city property and there's a process to do that. It's, it's just the people that are doing it without asking that we're trying to enforce the rule that we have now that says you can't put it up on our city property if you haven't asked us.
But if you allow one political person to put a sign up, you've got to allow the others.
Another way around it would be to go to the county and ask them to move all the polling places to schools and churches and then we're off the hook.
Well, that's where it came from and I was the director when that happened and, you know, so, I mean, you can go back to them and see if they'll change their mind, but that's why they moved to the parks.
Guess it's off the hot seat.
Well, in Douglas County, it is at a school and that, that issue still happens over there. I remember the last election, they had them all down the driveway and, you know, I, I see your point on, on Election Day, but the problem is there's no consistency there and I think it would just muddy the whole idea up to say, well, some days you can do it, some days you can't do it, and then you always have, well, I didn't know that was the day I couldn't do it. And I understand you're saying day of, but then we have staff having to clean it up. I don't mind thinking about it some, but it's just hard for me to see how we don't stay consistent with, we don't allow signs on the right of way. That's, that's just been the policy or on city property.
All right, last item, we have 35 seconds. So the Welcome Center, as it stands now, we've, we've asked the DDA to not move forward with the renovation. What I've done is I have spent a bunch of time over the last couple of months, I've talked to Norfolk Southern and DOT guys and staff and the consultants. Y'all, and, and we've, we have three possible options for some way to shorten the route of 61 and get it off of this stretch of pavement in front of us. I have, I, I tried to make the third option, which was the G-dot option, work in my mind and it's never, it may be more practical from an elevation standpoint, but it's not a better route to me. And so I've been trying and trying and trying to come up with a way to make the mayor's route work, which is the Peachtree Place Dirt Road thing work. And so I sent a, a scope to Keck and Wood and asked them what it would cost to evaluate that route, assuming that we modify the elevation of both Maple Street at the crossing and the dirt road. And it was 7,500 bucks to give us a yes or no, it's practical or not practical, and so I told them to do it. What that's going to tell us if we get a yes isn't still the answer because of the cost. So then we're going to have to do a cost estimate that's going to include some pretty serious property acquisition. If it's a no, then we have to consider, do we pay them to go evaluate the G-dot suggestion, which is the third option? In any case, we have a problem with the crossing because the whole point of this exercise is we're trying to horse trade a shortened 61 route, get that in exchange for closing chieves. And the way we were justifying that, since we only have four crossings downtown, is we close chieves and get a new one at Happy Valley. But the railroad is going to ask for a lot more than that, right? They're going to want to close like three crossings to build a new one because their MO in the long term is to get rid of crossings, right? Because crossings are dangerous to them and costly and whatever. So we're going to find out if they really want to close chieves or not. So all of this may be moot. If they, if we can't horse trade a favorable crossing swap, a one-for-one swap, then we're probably not going to be able to do this. So that's where we are. So my request to you would be to give me the time to figure that out before we move ahead with the Welcome Center because if we go to the third option, we may seriously change the site adversely and not be happy with the outcome. In any event, we need more parking there to make that building practical if we're going to have tourism and a coffee shop and whatever else is in there. We need more parking and it would help that end of downtown, the second block of downtown where the, the west end of it. So I'm asking for some time, basically, to figure out better what in the world we're doing. The bigger picture is y'all have paid, agreed to pay, to have someone design the Mirrorlake Connector, the walking trail, the comp plan. You've paid for the RSVP, plus you've got Chris now in full-time economic development mode focused on downtown. You've got Vicki here, who's a planner by trade, who's got ideas. You've got the mayor, who's worked here for a long time and got ideas about downtown. And you've eventually hired Huffman from AMAC to consolidate all that into a thing. I think that to move on the Welcome Center before that thing gets burst is a mistake. It may turn out to be not a big deal, but it, I'm just afraid if we don't wait till all those things work their way through, we congeal it into a single result, that doing any of it is really risky because we may look back and go, man, well, if we had just known that this is where we wanted to go, we wouldn't have done that. So that's, that's my case. If you want to, want us to move, move ahead with telling the DDA to do it, then tell me and that's what we'll do, but I'd, I'd rather wait.
My question, Tom, is how much time are you talking about? On this first part, it's $7,500 to ask the one question. How much time are we talking about on that? Did they give you an estimate?
No, not an estimate. I mean, I can, I can have that by Tuesday.
I think that's a question to ask on the $7,500.
I, my, my philosophy, I have a sort of a philosophical approach to this and it's this. I want whatever the downtown plan is to be so cool that when people look at it, they come all over the country to see downtown Villarica. And I haven't seen any plan that just made me drop my jaw over. And that's what, I don't know how to define that, but I think we'll all know it when we see it. I want us to do something great. And I think great's going to be expensive and it's going to take time and it may be beyond the capability of all of these different people that we have involved. If it is, then we just do the best we can do, but I don't want us to settle right now because we're in a hurry on something mediocre or something that we're conflicted over because when you get me and Vicki and Chris and the mayor and Huffman and whoever else at the table, you have no shortage of opinions, and I mean strong opinions. I mean, can y'all imagine that meeting? We've already had one sort of like that and that doesn't include Bobby, who has an opinion or two of his own. And I could look around the room and there's some other people in here that, that don't do too bad on opinions themselves. I, I think we just need to work this process, right? And if, and if I could say, hey, I'll have it done by the end of June, I'd be lying to you because I don't think it works that way. So I don't know, I don't know the answer to the time thing. I just want it to be great, whatever it is.
One other opinion that I'd like to throw in also is that I am concerned about how we have defined the project and I think that there is some, some substantial attention that needs to be paid to some very basic questions related to the Welcome Center so that there will be no misunderstanding down the road as to ownership, management, control. I think all of those issues are not well-defined at all in any type of documents that anybody can refer to. So I, that, that's, that's not a long-term issue at all, but it is a fundamental issue that the council's going to have to decide.
Total amount of time, five years, 10 years? Yes. There's a point to this.
So all of those legal details you're talking about, when should that have been handled?
Probably back in October, November of 2016.
And who would have been responsible for that? Was that a DDA project?
It was, it was a DDA project, but it is also something that was being, you know, considered by the council. And I think I set forth a timeline as to why I think, you know, it was not as well-defined as it should have been just because of the sequence of events. You had the, the council approving a part of the transaction. Soon thereafter, we had a new mayor elected. Soon thereafter, we had a new council elected and then very soon thereafter, we had a city manager who left. All of, and, and I just don't think a lot of things got finalized before the process started moving forward.
So basically, the scenario you've laid out here today between the two of you is that you need more time to look at how to make things great and wonderful and none of the paperwork's ready anyway.
It, it's not sufficient in my mind. It, it's not sufficient in my mind. It's my legal opinion that the paperwork's not sufficient to go forward.
That, that sounds like what we just said. So I don't know what the question is. You can't move forward anyway.
It, I think the opinions of all the citizens that participated in this whole Renaissance plan, there were at least two or three of us that reluctantly, but out of courtesy, said, "Let's look at this," thinking that we were going to have an answer in about a month. I don't know how many months ago that was now. So we put the DDA on hold. All these hundreds of people that participated in the Renaissance, that gave their opinion, we had dignitaries from the state come, we had the, I think it's embarrassing. This, to me, is embarrassing on our city, with all the people that we invited, had a groundworking, we're now groundbreaking. We're now saying the legal paperwork wasn't done the way it should have been done, but we had a groundbreaking with all these people there, and all these citizens participated and said what they wanted downtown, and now we're talking, "Well, we don't know how many months it'll be till we get answers, and we have no clue how much money it'll cost the city, and we're going to stop now something that was pivotal in that Renaissance program. We're going to stop it based on something that might happen, but we have no idea, it could be millions." And on top of that, right in my ward, we're talking about something that may make some people extremely angry when they find out what might be coming through their yard, or that they aren't going to have their property anymore. So even if we decide that it might be viable, there's a whole lot of unknowns with this that are a little scary with people that have lived somewhere for a long time, over there on Peachtree, Maple Street area. If we want to get the trucks out of downtown, we've got to get the bypass done. G-dot messed us up on that, and I think we need to fight till we get what we need on that through the, through Senator Dugan and whoever we have to use. I understand trying to get those trucks across. I was open to the idea, some of it was very intriguing, but it seems to me it keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger and more convoluted, so that nobody is ever going to know when the city says they're going to do something, that we do it. "We're going to do this, and you people all come, and we're going to celebrate it." Nope, we're not going to do it. I don't know how people are going to trust what we, that we say we're going to do what we're going to do. Sorry.
Well, for the record, to take me out of the planning process, I made my case for what I thought was in the best interest of the city of Villareca. I was not here when the Welcome Center was purchased. I've been very vocal, how I feel about that, but if this council wants to move forward with the Welcome Center, then I will not voice my opposition anymore. I do believe strongly that the alternate road is a good option, better than the bypass option, which we don't even have a date on right now. So, but, but my name won't be used anymore as part of that opposition to the Welcome Center, so please proceed. I think it's public comment time.
So do I have a consensus of that? Is there something you want me to bring back on that?
I, I...
I'd like no win timeframe.
Right, I, I don't know that we, that we could do anything if we wanted to anyway.
Not tonight.
Well, not, but really not in the, in the short term. I mean, so you've already authorized the money, so I would like to know the timeframe on that, if you could get that. There's no doubt that there's some benefit to either of the two plans that you talked about, but the cost and all the things that are involved are unknowns, and I think we need to know as much of that as we can upfront, that the option that you've paid for is one that, that is a good one, doesn't even involve what we're talking about here. But I still want to see it, and I'd like to have a timeframe on it. So as soon as you could get that, that would be helpful. People remind me all the time that government works slow, but it doesn't have to be as slow as what we see around here. It can go faster. So I would like to see you do that, if you could.
Well, we're involved in railroad here, so it's not going to move too fast.
We have reached the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time, state your name and record and address for the record, and allow us your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Dr. Bernice Brooks. I live at 130 Red Branch. I've done the sign-in. I am presenting to you the Carroll County Outreach Ministry Summer Literacy Program for Safe Schools, and according to me, it's against gang violence. Street gangs are moving into Carroll County, specifically Villareca. Youth as young as nine are being recruited because of idleness or lack of parent participation, food, and other things. So in conjunction with my partners that you might see on that list, and include Carroll County Family Connection, where I am one of the members, we'd like to prevent, I mean, some things from happening. Our mission is to provide an environment that is safe, caring, educational for our youth in the Villareca and surrounding areas, to deter these youth from participating in gang activities. So we are going to use some of the old methods to get students involved. In fact, we're going to have reading, we're going to have food, and we are going to have physical activities, so that we can expose our young people into activities that does not require computer. For an example, we are going to ask them to read. We partnered with Camp Reach at Glanton Heinzman. We're going to teach them games of the 40s and 60s, such as hopscotch, marbles, pick-up sticks, horseshoe jacks, and then we're going to introduce them to tennis, soccer, chess, backgammon, and any club. So all of these activities will take place Mondays and Wednesdays at Glanton Heinzman School Campus, and we invite you all to come over. The schedule is like this. The three, four weeks of June, we will be there. The week of July 4th, we will not be in session, as Carroll County schools are closed down. And we'd like for you to come by. We want students who can participate from grades, we say elementary. We want to introduce them to these programs early, because we know gangs will get them early. In fact, one of the young people that are targeted has just said, "I'm moving away." They are moving to Minnesota. So if you would, would you read the program that we are presenting, and you can give us feedback? I don't know if I put my phone number on there, but perhaps you know it. My email is right here, and I would like for you all to work with us, because this is the signature program that we are providing in a pilot fashion, and we will present it at JECO for the Kiwanis International. Now, if anybody has any question, just shoot.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. Anybody else?
No questions.
I don't think so.
Well, I just thank you all for your time. Come by and see us.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay. We will look, we'll go over consent, see if we have any consent agenda items now. Tab B1, we'll have to discuss, well, we've removed that until July, right? Tab C1, we'll discuss. Tab C2, will have to be a public input meeting, correct, David?
Yes.
C3, C4, uh, D1?
Oh, I think we need to put that on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd say D1, yes.
D2?
Consent agenda.
Yes.
D3?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tab E1?
Yes.
Uh, that, that person I had to be sworn in, I can do that at the office, I guess, at the City Hall. D2?
Consent.
I mean, E2. E3?
Consent.
Consent.
E4?
Consent.
E5?
Consent.
I'm serious.
F1?
Your petition's one for him.
Consent.
F3?
Consent.
F4?
Consent.
G1?
We'll let Sarah do a presentation.
G2?
Uh, I'm consent on that.
The reptiles?
Speak up. All right, I'm moving on.
I'm on H1.
H1?
Consent.
H2?
Consent.
H3, we'll have to talk about, oh, what?
The T's lost?
Yeah, we got it.
Do we need to talk about it, David, Tom?
I would talk about the project list.
Yeah, you need to.
Just to see if y'all have input.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you sitting there, H2, Tom was going to look at and see if this splosh was going to, Douglas County was going to think of that.
Take it off.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying that Tom was going to...
On the, the light over there, do you need to look at something?
I, I mean, I'm, I'll make sure that it's budgeted, if that's the question.
I'm sure it's budgeted, but my question is, is Douglas County's, will Douglas County...
I don't think Douglas is paying for it, no. I mean, we requested it.
And, and I don't think the splosh was available when y'all put that in the budget.
Were you talking about the light?
Right.
They were going to do, they had a plan, and I don't remember exactly what it was, though. Either they were going to, they were going to supply...
Well, the question is, do we put it on the consent agenda? And I say yes.
But you're not stupid, you don't do it?
No.
I'm assuming we're doing it.
I have one no.
We got one no, so we're talking about...
H3?
All right, move on.
We're going to talk about, and that's part of H4, H5, what to talk about. H6?
Those are all discussion.
H7, discussion.
I think the sense is done.
All right, so I have, um, tab D1, D2, D3, E1, E2, E3, E4, E5, F1, F2, F3, F4, G2, H1, and that's it.
That's it.
Does everybody have the same thing?
Yep.
I thought H2 was...
Okay. Ron said no.
Councilmember Marksman has a question.
If we put all this...
We had a no.
...on the consent agenda, now, we're going to go through this T tonight. That's what I want. You know, we're putting on consent agenda, then we get your T tonight, and we go through the same thing you go through.
Well, if the consent agenda, if it's on the consent agenda, it don't get talked about. We don't even bring it up.
Yeah, he, he reads them.
Well, he, but we don't talk about it.
Yeah, we don't discuss them, but he reads them.
I know, I know, and then you go to hold on down to, I'm right on your list.
You can help keep us in line on...
I mean, I hope we don't, if that's your point.
You have a business for the council? Okay. Thank y'all.
I wrote it down there.
As discussion.